Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene our Board of Supervisors meeting for July 21st. We took a 10-minute break and we're back here at 10:30. Our 6.5 item, our 10:30 a.m. item, our public hearing. It's continued from July 7th, 2020, considering approved the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Juice Plan Development Project. AM 1804, DA 18-01, GPAB 1801, rezon 1801, and rezon 20-01, PPD 18-01, SD 18-01, SD 20-01, Use Permit 1849, and Use Permit 2082. Oh, I'm sorry, O2. So we'll go ahead and this meeting was continued. We're gonna continue this public hearing today. And so we'll go ahead and move forward through that process. I know that this was a continuation. We're gonna go ahead and turn this over to our Community Development Director, Scott DeLeon. Interim Community Development Director.
Good morning, Board. Scott DeLeon, interim Community Development Director. Thank you very much for the opportunity this morning. As you have commented, this is a continuation of the item from July 7th. And the applicant and our consultant that prepared the EIR will be making presentations. There were several comments received very recently, beginning yesterday afternoon. There are four items that were included in your package or added to this item as early as this morning. You have a letter from Ms. Denise Louie that was received yesterday. One that was received yesterday from the California Native Plant Society. The State Attorney General's Office submitted a response yesterday afternoon. And the Center for Biological Diversity sent in a comment letter last evening. In consultation with our consultant who prepared the EIR, we feel these submittals don't raise any additional issues that have not already been addressed. And again, this morning, you're going to hear presentations from Ryan Sawyer, who is with Analytical Environmental Services. And they are the consultant that prepared the EIR and representatives from the developer. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan. And my staff is available. Mark Roberts is in his office. Tokara Thomas is also on this meeting. And I, of course, am in my office and prepared to try to answer any questions that you might have of staff and the process that we followed. But the details of the project will be handled by Ryan. And so I'm gonna turn it over now to Ryan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director DeLeon. Ryan, it seems like you're still on mute at this point. You can't hear. There you go, Ryan.
Thank you. Yeah, so I was waiting for the host to give me permission there. Good morning, Chair members of the Board and the public. As Scott mentioned, I'm Ryan Sawyer with Analytical Environmental Services, or AES, who are the environmental consultants that prepared the EIR for the proposed project. As Scott mentioned, I have a brief presentation this morning just to go over the various exhibits to the supplemental staff report. So I'm gonna share my screen here. Bear with me. Oh, and I should introduce Peter Bonadelli with my office as well. He is here to help answer technical questions if anything comes up. Sorry, I have to switch around. Okay. So this is the first page of the presentation. So as I mentioned, I'll be providing a summary and overview of the various exhibits to the staff report. So that includes Exhibit 1 to the supplemental staff report, that is. That was just provided to you last Friday. So Exhibit 1 provides responses to various comment letters that were received following release of the final EIR. Exhibit 2 is an errata to the June 2020 final EIR. So we made a few clarifications and minor changes to the mitigation measures in response to the comment letters that came in. Attachment A to Exhibit 2 is an update to the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. And Exhibit 3 are updated findings, which essentially follow the changes to the mitigation plan and the EIR that were made in Exhibit 2. And then finally, at the end of the presentation, I just wanna briefly touch on the late comment letters that just came in last night and late last week that Scott mentioned. So Exhibit 1 of the supplemental staff report responds to several comment letters that were received by the county the evening before the July 7th Board of Supervisors hearing, including comments from the Department of Justice, the Center for Biodiversity, the California Native Plant Society, and the Sierra Club. Additionally, the staff report contains responses to several key comments and questions that were raised by the public at the hearing and subsequent emails related to the Middletown Housing Site. So the key issues raised in the comments will be addressed in this presentation listed here and include issues related to wildfire ignition risk, emergency response, and evacuation. Some comments indicated that Alternative C, which is the high-density alternative studied in the EIR, could reduce wildfire risk and that that should be elaborated on in the EIR. We received some comments related to compliance with road standards, related to greenhouse gas and vehicle mile traveled mitigation, related to biological resources. The land use policy 6.12 issue was touched on again by the Sierra Club. And then also the questions related to the Middletown Housing Site, specifically flooding issues are what I wanna focus on today. So regarding wildfire, comments from both the Department of Justice and the Center for Biodiversity asserted that impacts associated with wildfire ignition risk, emergency response, and evacuation were not adequately addressed in the EIR. The June 2020 final EIR acknowledged that wildfire risks from development of the site would be potentially significant, given its location in a high fire hazard severity zone. But in response to late comment letters, the final EIR was supplemented to elaborate on the potential for increased wildfire ignition risk and to further explain how the wildfire prevention plan, project design features and commitments, and the mitigation would reduce these effects to a less than significant level. The mitigation monitoring recording plan, or the MMRP as we call it, was also updated to list the project commitments related to wildfire prevention and response, including implementation of the wildfire prevention plan. So typically, a project commitment is a part of the project we're studying. It doesn't go into the MMRP. But to clarify all of the project commitments above and beyond code and make sure that there is a tool for monitoring that those commitments are adhered to, we added them into the MMRP. The revisions to the final EIR explain in more detail that the project would expand the wildland urban interface, which is a common place for wildfires to begin. An additional literature cited in the EIR indicates that many of the human-related causes of wildfire ignition have decreased in recent decades due to increased fire education, a decline in smoking, improved vegetation treatment along roadways, and modern vehicle technology. However, electrical power lines are still a significant and frequent cause of wildfire spread. Project components outlined in the wildfire prevention plan, including the establishment of 100-foot fire breaks along all the project roads and the undergrounding of up to 18 miles of existing overhead PG need power lines, and the undergrounding of all proposed new electrical utilities within the site would eliminate two of the most significant causes of wildfire ignition. Related to emergency evacuation, several new exhibits were introduced illustrating that there will be three driveways leading out onto Bus Canyon Road, including an existing ranch road, an existing winery road, and a new road located near the eastern site border at McCain Canyon. In addition, Grange Road, which extends from Highway 29 to the neighboring properties to the north, can be utilized by emergency vehicles for additional access and can be utilized as an alternative evacuation route. And because there will be a fire station emergency response center on site, first responders will already be present during any emergency situation. The project will include state-of-the-art early detection warning systems that will increase the lead time for evacuation of the site, including the onsite emergency response center, mountaintop cameras, 24-hour security that would also be available to spot wildfires, a fire siren, and a hardwired underground mixed-comunication system for all residences. As a new project commitment, a wildfire evacuation plan we prepared that will serve as an educational tool for project employees, residents, and guests that will identify and describe the emergency meeting areas, evacuation and emergency egress routes, and procedures in the event of a wildfire emergency. The evacuation plan would allow for orderly evacuation of the site that would not impede emergency responders from traveling and responding to fires, thereby exacerbating fire risk. The roadway with design will adhere to CAL FIRE protection standards as well as local plans to ensure emergency access. This will include design requirements such as roadways that can handle the weight of fully loaded fire equipment, roads that are not exactly steep, and roads that are loose to provide double access to provided escape routes. Adherence to code will also ensure that emergency access can be maintained simultaneously with vehicles evacuating the site. Furthermore, the National Fire Protection Association standards indicate that for residential areas, the required number of access routes for projects with between 100 to 600 residential units is two, and with over 600 residential units is three. So with the three access points for ingress and egress on Bus Canyon Road, plus the fourth emergency access and evacuation route provided by Grange Road, the project is in compliance with these standards. Although an analysis of evacuation times is not specifically required under CEQA, nor are there any adopted standards or thresholds for evacuation timelines within the adopted emergency plans in the area. Based on consultation with traffic engineers that have been working on the EIR, it's anticipated that the proposed roadway system can evacuate the proposed Phase 1 land uses in under an hour and that Phase 1 land uses would not exceed the volume-to-capacity ratios of Bus Canyon Road. So this slide here illustrates the wildfire evacuation regional access plan. So it shows the three evacuation points and access points along Bus Canyon Road and the fourth at Grange Road. And then it also shows the locations of shelter locations within Middletown and regional locations of fire districts. This exhibit here, which was also included as an attachment to the staff report, demonstrates that all of the proposed land uses under Phase 1 are within a five-mile drive distance from the onsite fire station. And according to the Insurance Services Office, being within a five-mile drive distance of a fire station within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant is one criteria for reduced fire insurance rates, indicating a lower risk of development to be impacted by a wildfire. The one exception to this I should mention would be the campgrounds up here in the northern portion of the site. Some comments noted that Alternative C, which was the high-density alternative evaluated in the EIR, could have a lower risk of wildfire-related impacts. Although lower-density subdivisions can have a greater risk of wildfires than clustered subdivisions, as explained above, that is not necessarily the case here with the proposed project where the project's design incorporates features and systems that eliminate the differences in terms of wildfire risk between high-density and lower-density development. Articles cited in the comments indicate that lower-density developments may have a number of features that increase the risk of wildfires, such as natural vegetation and proximity to structures, and difficulty of firefighter access. However, the proposed project, which is designed with project elements that go above and beyond code requirements, including fire breaks, defensible space around buildings, an extensive vegetation management plan, and an onsite fire station and fire hydrants throughout the site with a reliable community water supply system, is not representative of a typical low-density development project and therefore does not have the same level of risk as usual rural subdivisions. Therefore, the conclusions in the EIR that wildfire risks between Alternative C and the proposed project are similar are valid conclusions. Regarding the comments that the site plan does not meet road standards, the site is subject to road standards outlined by the state's fire safe regulations. And the condition of TENDA MAP approval number six requires that prior to recordation of final maps, the interior road shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the standards compiled and stated within the project's development agreement, which actually references the Lake County Road, CAL FIRE, and ASHTO standards. Any revisions to these standards will require approval from the Department of Public Works through alternative design standards or deviation process. So as I mentioned, we also received a number of comments related to greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled. Mobile source emissions in the form of vehicle miles traveled, or VMP as we abbreviate it, were the largest single contributor to the project's greenhouse gas emissions. A transportation demand management plan was proposed to reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and was included as a required mitigation in the draft EIR. The final EIR included the full transportation demand management plan with additional information about the implementation, monitoring, and reporting requirements in compliance with the recommendations of the draft EIR mitigation measures. Some comments in the final EIR indicated that the project's proposed mitigation for VMP and greenhouse gas emissions was vague and unenforceable and that the EIR did not consider all feasible mitigation to reduce the project's impact, including but not limited to mitigation options, including public transit and carbon credits. And while the TDM plan included shuttle service for employees, it did not include a transit option for the public and project residents. In response to these comments, the TDM plan was expanded to include free on-call, style, and ride transportation service for employees, patrons, residents, and the general public within a 15-mile radius of the site, traveling between the Gwinoc Valley Site and the community of Middletown that would also provide connections to regional transit service. Additionally, the TDM plan was revised to include specific performance criteria to achieve a 15% reduction below the baseline vehicle miles traveled disclosed in the EIR. And the TDM plan was revised to include quantified reductions associated with the measures. So essentially, it exposes what the anticipated reductions in VMP would be as a result of implementation of the measures. Also, we added a mitigation requiring the purchase of greenhouse gas carbon credits to offset the project's remaining greenhouse gas emissions that are above and beyond the stated thresholds in the EIR. However, the EIR's conclusion of a significant unavoidable greenhouse gas impact was not changed, given the limited supply of carbon offsets and the uncertainty regarding the availability of offset credits throughout the life of the project. Related to biological resources, some comments questioned whether the mitigation ratios were sufficient to offset impacts to sensitive habitats and requested additional information on how success criteria will be measured. Within the EIR, sensitive habitat mitigation was based on the type and the quality of the habitat observed. Mitigation measures generally required at a 2:1 ratio of mitigation acres to acres impacted. The final EIR mitigation was revised to note that preservation is the preferred form of mitigation and to extend monitoring of habitat restoration enhancement to a minimum of five years. Habitat must meet the muster of its in-kind to qualify as complete. Comments also requested setbacks for aquatic habitats be extended up to the full dispersal capability of species that utilize the aquatic and upland habitat, stating that proposed setbacks would be insufficient to preserve water quality and habitat quality. Rhytoparan corridors on the Gwinoc Valley Site are narrow, and many of the linear features are channelized agricultural drainages and lack significant rhytoparan vegetation. Development beyond setbacks is low-density and utilizes wildlife-friendly fencing to promote dispersal beyond setbacks. Butts North Creek, the most prominent rhytoparan corridor on the Gwinoc Valley Site, is preserved in the open space combining district. The final EIR contains several mitigation measures that are protective of water quality in addition to the construction setbacks. Comments also stated that there was no east-to-west wildlife migration corridor preserved on the Gwinoc Valley Site and that the corridors were too narrow. The final EIR includes supplemental analysis on wildlife movement that extensively discusses the Maya Comas to Berrius study. Wildlife movement routes in the M2B study, as we refer to it, were minimally modified based on existing development and proposed development, such that all terrestrial pathways, including an east-to-west pathway, were preserved. Development near narrow corridors is low-density and utilizes either no fencing or minimal wildlife-friendly fencing. Corridors were developed based on the topography observed on the ground and the wildlife species that can age traverse the Gwinoc Valley Site. We also received a few comment letters indicating that California red-legged frog and western bumblebee have the potential to occur on the site and therefore they should have been analyzed and addressed in the EIR. We did a bit more research on this subject, and it appears that the Gwinoc Valley Site is out of the current range of these species. They have not been seen within miles of the Gwinoc Valley Site for decades. Therefore, it was determined that no additional analysis or mitigation was needed for those species. Related to oats, comments noted that the canopy cover of 10% or more, any canopy cover of 10% or more should be considered woodland and that historical oak woodland habitat or potential future oak woodland habitat should also be considered woodland for purposes of impact analysis. And comments also asserted that transplanting of oats should not be allowable as a mitigation measure. The responses in Exhibit 1 indicate that oak woodland includes areas of 10% oak cover or greater as defined in the final EIR. And areas that were historically oak woodland or may support oak woodland were defined as their respective habitats at the time of the survey. So the existing conditions present on the site. Related to transplanting, this has actually been successfully accomplished on the Gwinoc Valley Site in the past. And in the event that a transplanted tree fails, so in other words, it does not survive, it would be replaced as though it would remove. So the replacement mitigation would kick in at that point. Comments from the Sierra Club indicated that the changes to land use policy 6.12 should be evaluated in the EIR and the draft EIR recirculated. In response to this, it was noted that the effects of the general plan land use policy amendment for the project site to allow a higher ratio of residential homes is actually evaluated in detail in the EIR already. And therefore, no further environmental analysis is required. Sierra Club also pointed out, though, that the wording of the proposed changes to land use policy 6.12 was perhaps too broad and could have allowed additional residential units within the other special study areas of the Middletown Area Plan. So in response to this, in the staff report, it's proposed that the wording of that land use policy be adjusted to clarify that it only applies to the Langtree-Gwinoc Special Study Area of the Middletown Area Plan. And so that refined language and the motion related to that is in your staff report. A number of questions were raised at the previous Board of Supervisors hearing related to the Middletown Housing Site that are responded to in detail in the staff report. A few clarifications have been made to the Middletown Housing Plan and to the EIR to address these comments. Of note, it was clarified that access to the site will be via Santa Clara Road only and that the Park Avenue connection shown on the plan will be emergency access only. Because there were a few residents located along Park Avenue that were concerned that the increase in vehicle traffic would be a nuisance. So that has been changed to be designated as emergency access only. Also, some of the comments raised concerns that developing the Middletown Housing Site and the access roadways could exacerbate existing flooding that occurs in the vicinity. So to ensure that the potential for development of the site, including the road access improvements, won't increase flooding on adjacent properties, some additional discussion and mitigation was added to the final EIR. Specifically, mitigation measure 3.9-4 was revised to require a floodplain analysis certified by a registered professional engineer prior to issuance of a grading permit for that site. The floodplain analysis will need to describe any drainage features if needed to ensure that project impacts do not increase the extent or depth of flooding in adjacent areas. And mitigation measures to address that issue could include the addition of additional onsite drainage wells. Exhibit 2 to the staff report titled "The Errata to the Final EIR" identifies the specific changes made to the June 2020 final EIR in response to the comments described above. Changes that were made to these sections are shown here, and I will briefly describe on the next slide. So Section 2, Project Description, was revised to include an added discussion of the amendment to land use policy 6.12. Section 3, Biological Resources, was amended to include clarifications to mitigation measures that I described above. 3.7, Greenhouse Gas Emissions, was amended to include additional mitigation requirements, and specifically the requirement to purchase greenhouse gas offset credits. Hydrology Section was amended to include the discussion of flooding at the Middletown, and expanded discussion of flooding at the Middletown Housing Site and the mitigation requirements related to that. The Transportation Section was amended, and specifically the mitigation that section, to include additional performance criteria and also to require the dialeride service as a component of the Transportation Demand Management Plan. The Wildfire Chapter was expanded to elaborate on the discussions for potential wildfire impacts and how the wildfire prevention plan and project commitments reduce those risks. And Appendix TDM, which is the Transportation Demand Management Plan, was essentially supplemented to bring it up into compliance with the new mitigation requirements in the EIR. An updated MMRP was provided as Attachment A to the errata and incorporated the edits to the mitigation measures described above. These include the addition of supplemental and increased requirements to the previously recommended mitigation measures listed here. Additionally, a new table outlining the various project commitments above and beyond code was added at the end of the mitigation monitoring and recording plan as Table 4-2. It should be noted that the commitments listed in that table are not inclusive of all of the project commitments above and beyond code, but just some of the key ones and also specifically the ones that address wildfire. Of note, project commitments outlined in the wildfire prevention plan were added, which makes them enforceable by the county through the standard conditions to standard conditions of approval number one. And new project commitments are listed here on this slide. So these are project commitments that weren't previously described in the draft EIR. And they include requirements that the onsite helipads are constructed to meet CAL FIRE requirements for helicopters for firefighting purposes. The requirement to prepare an emergency evacuation plan is an education tool for project residents, guests, and employees that is generally consistent with the content and information provided in the South Lake County Emergency Plan and that that emergency evacuation plan must be prepared in cooperation with CAL FIRE, the South Lake County Fire Protection District, and the Lake County Sheriff Department. And finally, a requirement to make sure that the maps marking the locations of private ranch roads within the site are provided to emergency response personnel so that these roads may be used in the event of a wildfire. And the findings, which were provided as the final exhibit to the staff report, were updated to reflect the changes to the mitigation measures described above and to provide additional information related to the financial infeasibility of Alternative C as a result of a recent memo provided by the applicant. Additionally, I wanna take this opportunity to address several comment letters that have come in since the posting of the final EIR errata and the responses to comments on the county's website last week, including a letter from the Department of Justice received last night and letters from the California Wildlife Foundation and California Native Plant Society. The letters from the California Wildlife Foundation and the California Native Plant Society raised issues primarily related to biological resources. And our biologists here and resource specialists have taken a hard look at those letters and are advising that they do not raise any new issues that have not been previously addressed or substantially covered in the EIR. If there are any questions related to this, Pete Bonadelli is available to answer, and we can bring on some other specialists within my office to help address those questions if any come up. However, I'd like to go through the points raised in the Department of Justice letter here briefly. So the Department of Justice letter states that, again, the EIR does not provide the required project-specific analysis of increased wildfire risks that consider all of the factors at play and states that the final EIR must analyze whether the project and its location and with its land uses, arrangement of structures, density spacing, topography grading, et cetera, exacerbates the risk of wildfire ignition and spread. So contrary to this comment, a multi-factor and project-specific analysis is precisely what the EIR provides. The EIR summarizes the extensive mapping of the multiple wildfire risk factors, including vegetation, wind patterns, topography, aspect, CAL FIRE severity zones, and regional risk, and concludes the potential risk of wildfire exacerbation is indeed significant. It also summarizes available research related to wildfire risks, such as the effects of density, to inform this conclusion. Then, in light of the existing setting and what we know from current research, the EIR evaluates whether the unique elements of the project, including the extensive measures outlined in the wildfire plan, reduce this risk to a less than significant level and concludes, again, based on the existing conditions of the site, research and consultation with representatives at the South Lake County Fire Protection District, that taken together, the project reduces the risk of wildfire ignition to a less than significant level. The Department of Justice letter also indicates that the errata to the final EIR does not analyze whether Alternative C would reduce impact to wildfire risks. To clarify, the final EIR does acknowledge that wildfire risks may be higher with low-density developments. But here, the proposed project was specifically designed with wildfire prevention in mind, incorporating fire breaks, underground electrical lines, an onsite CAL FIRE response center, an adequate wildfire water supply and suppression system, and enforced defensible space maintenance. These components and commitment of the proposed project go above and beyond code requirements and would eliminate the wildfire risk normally associated with low-density development. So there's specific to low-density development, that is. Therefore, the conclusion of a less than significant impact is valid. While the EIR does point to the final While the EIR does point to the financial infeasibility of the wildfire prevention measures under the high-density alternative, it does not rely on this to make the conclusion of similar wildfire impacts. Although the proposed project is less densely designed than alternative C, the ability to implement specialized fire protection measures lowers the wildfire risk levels, giving the proposed project similar wildfire impacts as a more densely designed development. The Department of Justice letter also indicated that the EIR does not adequately address evacuation, including the capacity on internal and external roadway as the event of a wildfire, as I mentioned previously, although an analysis of evacuation time is not specifically required, nor are there any adopted standards or thresholds for evacuation timelines within the currently adopted emergency plans in the area. Based on consultation with traffic engineers working on the EIR, it's anticipated that the proposed roadway system can evacuate the proposed Phase 1 land uses in under an hour, and the Phase 1 land uses would not exceed the volume-to-capacity ratios of Bus Canyon The Department of Justice letter also indicated that the final EIR still does not adequately address post-mitigation level of service at Bus Canyon Road and State Route 29 intersection. As stated in the responses to comments document, the post-mitigation level of service at Bus Canyon Road was shown in the traffic study appendices, and as shown therein, the Bus Canyon Road intersection currently operates to the level of service C and would continue to operate this level of service C under baseline plus project conditions after the implementation of mitigation measures. Additionally, under cumulative conditions, so future cumulative conditions in the year 2040, the intersection is anticipated to operate at a level of service E, and after the addition of project-related traffic plus the implementation of the recommended mitigation, it would continue to operate at level of service E. So the project does not exacerbate the core operating conditions of that intersection. The DOJ letter indicated that the final EIR still does not reconcile the EIR's reliance on vegetation removal to reduce wildfire risk on one hand, and its limitation on vegetation removal under the biological mitigation measures. So in response to this, I want to clarify that the EIR identifies six sensitive habitats that may be impacted by the wildfire management activities, and of these six, two are grassland trese communities that do not require vegetation clearing to reduce the wildfire risk present there. Two of the other habitats are riparian, and they occur only along natural aquatic wildfire breaks and compose less than 1% of the Guanac Valley site. These habitats can be avoided without posing a safety risk. The remaining four habitats are tree-dominated. Mitigation measure 3.4-18, which prevents significant impact to sensitive habitats from wildfire risk management activities, allows for the necessary vegetation removal through use of hand tools and avoidance of tree removal. Grazing is also allowed in all of these habitat types to help manage fuels. Therefore, this mitigation does not prohibit wildfire risk management within a sensitive habitat. Rather, it identifies the least impactful methods that allow for wildfire risk management without adversely impacting the sensitive habitat. The comment letter from DOJ indicated that it's unclear if the wildfire prevention strategies are enforceable and that they remain vague. As stated in the response to comments, the strategies in the wildfire prevention plan have been added to the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan to clarify that they shall be implemented rather than an optional tone used in the plan itself. And implementation of the project is described in the EIR, which includes the commitments listed in the mitigation monitoring plan, is a standard condition of approval in the proposed conditions of approval document. And then finally, the Department of Justice indicated it did not have enough time and had to request a continuance. Obviously, it's up to the decision-makers if you wish to continue the hearing to allow more time, but strictly from a legal compliance perspective, it's noted that the EG's office did not comment during the NOP review and scoping period, nor during the draft EIR review period, and there are no mandatory review periods for a final EIR. So that concludes my presentation today, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Scott, it's my understanding that the applicant also has a presentation that they wish to share.
Yeah, just like last time, I think we'll allow the presentations to move forward as and then we'll go to start with questions from the board and then open it up to the community. So Scott, I don't know if you want to, who's going to do a next presentation?
Scott, we're happy to.
Okay, does the applicant want to do a presentation at this point? Here we go.
Sure. Good morning, Chair Simon and members of the Board of Supervisors, and for those of you who have joined us online, my name is Kirsty Shelton, and I'm with Mahon and have been managing the many designers and environmental consultants for over the last three years. Thank you again to the chair and the board for the two-week extension so that we could thoughtfully and thoroughly respond to the public comments provided. I know that the EIR consultant already responded to the majority of the comments, however, we thought it would be helpful for you to see our active participation in response to the community concern. Through that end, we put together some slides to walk you through the various project elements that have been influenced by the recent public process. There have been several comments that it appears that we haven't provided enough time for the agency or the public to review the document. The schedule shows that we have been working with the county for over three years, seven years from the adoption of the area plan that forecasted the development in this area, the EIR consultant for 18 months, and the community for over two years. As you can see, our first public notice was for the scoping of the EIR, which was in the spring of 2019, over 15 months ago. In addition to the very public process over the last past year and a half, I would like to point out that at every opportunity for the public to comment, it was extended by approximately two weeks. The draft EIR public comment period was extended from 45 to 60 days. The first hearing to request a recommendation before the planning commission was continued for 12 days to allow more time for review and comment. And as you remember, we were just before you, two weeks ago, and we continued this hearing to allow more time to respond to the tweets. Since we have seen you last, our team has reached out to the members of the community, attended the Middletown Area Town Hall meeting to discuss the Santa Clara property, and provided formal written responses to the letters received. One of our recent comments was about the impact of the California native plant, and because the EIR consultant formally responded to the academic aspect of these comments, I wanted to introduce to you a concept that is not a requirement of the EIR, nor wasn't included in the multiple volumes of use permits that we submitted. Ever since this landowner purchased this property, they hired a landscape steward to literally listen to the land. This concept hasn't been addressed before the board or any of the public, but I thought it would be helpful for everyone to have an inside view of what it looks like on the ranch as it relates to native plants. It is my pleasure to introduce a key member of the ranch management team, Spencer Woodward. Spencer is a design ecologist and a logistics planner at Island Planning Corporation. Spencer's foundation in landscape design and anthropogenic agroecosystems began 20 years ago with the study of plants, traditional pre-colonial land management, ethnobotany, agroforestry, and horticulture. Spencer's role on the ranch doesn't really have a job title, however, his role is vital to the fundamentals of the landowner and our commitment to the native plant community.
Hi, I hope everyone can hear me. Thanks for the introduction, Kirsty. I'll start by saying a few words about what we're currently involved in on the ranch and what some of our aspirations are for the project's future. But before I get into that, I wanted just to show you a few images of the native plant nurseries that we're developing and offer a glimpse at the incredible and important range of botanical diversity that we are currently working with. On the top left, you'll see the second generation of a plant called Prunus allicifolia, or Holly Leaf Cherry, that we have propagated in our nurseries. This California native cherry relative has been cultivated for centuries for its edible fruit and leached seed meal. Flowers provide an important forage for bees. The plant is also the larval host for a number of native butterfly species. Beneath that photo are just a few of hundreds of narrow-leafed milkweed seedlings that we've germinated last fall, propagated from wild seeds, collected along Puda Creek and other areas of the ranch. Of all the milkweed species, this is considered to be the single most important host plant for monarch butterflies in California, and there are a number of other milkweed species native to the site that we are also growing as well. The photo on the right was taken under one of our shade structures, showing the varying stages of propagation in some of our many species of native perennial bunchgrass. And on the next slide, at the top, is a view of another smaller shade structure that we have dedicated to seed germination. In the photo, you're looking at basically a wide variety of species, from oaks and grasses to the local coffee berry, Ramus californica, and red buds, etc., The bottom three images show, from left, a bucket holding hundreds of oak seeds ready for germination, while the two images on the right show germinating and transplanted Ramus allicifolia, which is a local drought-tolerant evergreen shrub. This is an excellent plant for rocky slopes, erosion control, and provides an important food source for a number of native bird species. This project's commitment to California native plant communities has really been a core focus since inception. Beginning back in 2017, I've been fortunate enough to explore this property and discuss it with some of the world's most prestigious designers and master planners as they familiarize themselves with the land and work through their design process. On each of the behavves, there's been a firmly-held desire and commitment to integrate each project facet into the larger property-wide system dedicated to sustainable land management and stewardship. That's where nurseries and plant propagation play a central role. Over the past two years, we've implemented an increasingly diverse onsite plant nursery focusing on seed and cutting propagation of California native trees, shrubs, and perennials, with a particular emphasis on perennial bunchgrasses and geophytes. These are two exceedingly important, yet increasingly scarce marginalized plant groups within the California flora. Most of our propagation material is collected onsite throughout all seasons of the year. Our local nursery staff are being trained in the many nuances of native plant horticulture, working with a vast diversity of species, many of which are not commercially available, even in some of the best native plant retail nurseries in the region. Throughout the past years of discussion and planning with the client and developer, we've outlined the methodology and budgeting necessary to continue to scale up our propagation goals and planting initiatives in order to provide the nursery production, training, and resources necessary to undertake long-term native landscaping, restoration, ecological stewardship of this property. It's very likely that you won't find another development in California which has committed the resources to establish native plant nurseries and propagation programs as robust and well-established as ours, and really, we've only just begun. We see this as a constantly-evolving model for others to learn from and hopefully replicate. As the principal landscape designers on this project, we approach our role from the perspective of conservation, enhancement, and ecological restoration. We think this property provides a very rare and exceptional opportunity to create a working model for native landscape design, sustainable land management, in the context of a residential and hospitality development. And before I turn this back over to Kirsty, I'd like to just extend an open invitation for any of you, anyone interested in coming by this ranch nursery, take a more in-depth look at some of the native plant propagation initiatives that we are working on. I'm there every week and will be for the foreseeable future, and I love nothing more than showing people what we're up to and discussing plants. So thanks a lot for your time, and I'll turn this back over to you, Kirsty.
Thanks, Spencer. I hope everyone enjoyed a little inside view of life at the ranch. When Spencer and his team first arrived at the ranch over three years ago, the first thing that they suggested was a lieu of removing trees that were proposed to be removed as part of the previous vineyard entitlement, that they should consider saving these trees. And over the past three years, over 250 trees that would have otherwise been cut down and burned to accommodate vineyards have been intentionally root-pruned and successively This graphic shows the oak woodland coverage on the site. 5,645 acres of the 16,000-acre ranch are 35% as recorded by the certified biologist. A question was raised about the adequate definition of oak woodlands you heard Ryan talk about earlier. As part of the response, the certified biologist submitted a letter outlining the definition and distinction between an oak woodland and an oak savanna. The draft EIR analyzed a woodland to be an oak woodland with 60% and greater tree canopy, and 10 to 60% was defined as a savanna. In the forthcoming slides, you will see how we responded to this comment. Our initial submitter proposed a 1.5-acre preservation for every acre impacted. We analyzed 220 acres of oak woodlands impacted, or 4% of the amount of oaks in the property. As you can see on this graphic, that resulted in 331 acres of preservation. This graphic shows the additional preservation, almost doubling the preservation, from 331 to 633 acres. This was guided by the increase of preservation to 2 acres preserved to 1 acre impacted for blue and live oak, and 3 acres preserved to 1 acre impacted for the valley oak, and the inclusion of the oak savannas to be included as a woodland. This resulted in the analysis of total oak woodland from 220 to 316 acres, or an increase of 4 to 5% of the total oak woodland on the site that is impacted as part of the project. These tables show the increase in mitigation ratio between the draft and the final EIR. As you can see, the total number of deed-restricted oak preservation has increased to almost 2,000 acres as part of the current project. The previous entitlements, as part of the Water Rights EIR, require that 2,675 acres of open space be preserved. As part of our project, we amended the area of the open space, as you can see the outline at the open space on the screen. In addition to the preservation of open space, I'd like to point out that in addition, we functionally preserve additional areas of open space by implementing the buildable envelope restriction of 1.5 acres to any lot greater than 1.5 acres, therefore creating additional indirect preservation areas throughout the study. Finally, we expanded the areas of preservation through the addition of habitat corridor easements, which connect to this open space, as you'll see in greater detail on the following slide. In response to the draft EIR, a comment from the Center for Biorediversity stated that we did not allow for habitat movement throughout the site. I wanted to take a moment and outline the process that we took in response. First, we hired a wildlife biologist to assist us in analyzing this. Then, once we had a draft, we presented our findings to representatives from the local Lake County Sierra Club and the local Audubon Society, who were the direct representatives of the study, which I will discuss. In 2018, a habitat movement and corridor study was conducted by a local nonprofit to assess the regional habitat connectivity for a portion of Northern California between the Maya Commons and the various mountain ranges, called the M2B study. However, it should be noted that this effort was never formally adopted as a county or community commitment. The project site is outlined in yellow. It lies in an area that is considered the heart of this M2B study, as you can see outlined in this image. This slide shows the result of the permeability assessment of the project site. What you see in yellow is the most likely land-based or terrestrial paths for wildlife to cross across the site, as defined by the M2B study. Please note that the background information for this study did not account for any existing development, such as vineyards, when creating these likely corridors. On this slide, what you see in yellow is the most likely wildlife pathway adjacent to aquatic areas are riparian. In this case, it follows the Puda Creek, within the northern property boundary. Here, you can see in light blue the wildlife paths, as likely from the M2B study, overlaid onto the project site and the proposed plan. Adjacent to the light blue is the dark blue dotted line, and is our identified proposed wildlife pathway to accommodate both the existing and entitled vineyards, and then ultimately accommodate for our project. This resulted in lot modifications, which you'll see next. The conclusion of our analysis is that the vineyard fencing is wildlife-exclusion fencing, and they impeded the pathways identified in this 2018 M2B study. As you can see, these dark blue dotted lines take into consideration both the already entitled or developed vineyards, as identified in the light yellow and green color. On the screen, the dark blue lines outlined in dark orange demonstrate the approximate 300-foot-wide habitat corridors, and the pink represents the small segments that occur on residential parcels. We will go into more detail about these in the next slide. We refer to these as residential habitat connectivity easements, and they will be permanently preserved and recorded on the final map. It should be noted that this exercise was very important to this project, given the deep commitment to sustainability and resulted in parcel reductions and modifications, and most importantly, an additional 425 acres of long-term preserved habitat connectivity easement. On this slide, I'd like to show an example of one of the 11 residential lots that has a residential habitat easement. Within their parcel, if they would like to install fencing, they have two options. First, as you'll see on the left side of the screen, if they would like to install fencing along the perimeter or anywhere within the residential habitat easement area, it must be a wildlife-friendly fence. For an example, think of a split-rail fence. For an example, think of a split rail fence. Second, a fencing which does not allow wildlife movement is requested, then this fencing cannot be anywhere within the 300-foot corridor of the residential habitat easement, as shown on the slide. Again, this will be deed restricted, including the design elements, and also in the homeowners association. In response to our public comment, we increased the requirement for the installation of the alternative energy to be installed prior to final occupancy of the structure. As a team, we have looked for creative ways to integrate solar into the project design. Here you can see some opportunities for solar. In addition, we've integrated it into parking structures and other accessory facilities. In response to public comment, we further bolstered our mitigation measure to require installation of alternative energy at term of final occupancy. In response to the community concerns of the site, of the Santa Clara Workforce Housing Site, we attended the Middletown Town Hall meeting on Thursday, July 9, and had multiple meetings since with the neighborhood. I would like to highlight the key issues that were raised, one of them being the density, second being the regional drainage and flooding, and then finally, access on Park Avenue. First, I'd like to discuss the density analysis. As you can see here, we are not requesting a density bonus, as the general plan density for this property could allow up to 63 units. But we are only asking to allow two units per one lot on the interior of the project in pink. This maintains larger lots and primarily single-family residential on the exterior of the property, which is adjacent to the existing neighborhood. This proposal yields a total of 36 lots with 50 units. In comparison to allowing the duplex units in the interior, as you can see on this slide, this is a 2008 County of Life-approved tenant subdivision on the same site. As you can see on the right side of the slide, the approval included 49 residential lots. There were 31 on the exterior of the property and 18 on the interior. In comparison, our request includes a similar unit count, 50 units, but only 36 lots, with 21 single-family units on the exterior versus 31. This results in a lower density on the exterior to blend more in with the surrounding land uses. In response to the regional drainage, here is a slide from the tenant map, and you can see the water retention areas are in dark gray and include water gardens to store stolen water. In addition, there will be additional conversations with civil engineer and the neighborhood to confirm that the flooding matters are taken care of. This slide depicts aerial photography showing the surrounding land uses with the proposed subdivision overlaid into the existing site condition. This helps to put into perspective the size of the site and the density requested. Lastly, I'd like to point out that the access on Park Avenue has been revised to remain unapproved to allow for emergency vehicle access only. The primary route will continue to be from Santa Clara, and all roads will be publicly maintained by the county. Finally, there was some concern about the architecture not blending into the neighborhood. The original documents were provided as a massing study to support the duplex request. We are in the process of interviewing local architects, and here are some reference images to demonstrate the architectural flavor and design elements we intend for the site to be built with. Finally, I'd like to share that in response to another public comment, we increased the monitoring of the off-site well terms in the mitigation monitoring reporting plan. This concludes my slides, and now I'd like to introduce Katherine Philippakis from Forel of Rana Martell. Katherine is the land use attorney who I have had the pleasure of working alongside on this project for many years.
Thank you Kirsty. Good morning Chairman Simon and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments today. I would like to speak to you a bit about the wildfire-related issues, as I know you all received another letter from the AG's office last night, and I'd like to provide some context here. Briefly, you should know that this is really a model project from the perspective of wildfire prevention and defense. It's a benchmark for how larger developments should be done, and that is especially important here in a fire-ravaged community such as ours. This project has been the result of a lot of hard work and communication between your staff in Public Works and Community Development, and the staff at the South Lake County Fire District, and our team of experts. It will result in many improvements that we're very proud of, but there's one in particular that I'd like to talk about now, which is a brand-new fire station that will serve not only this property, but this entire corner of South Lake County. It will even be available to our neighbors in Yolo and Napa County if they want to ask for help. To put things in perspective, I'd like to give you an example of how important our cooperation and partnership has been. After the last hearing was continued, I was talking to Battalion Chief Mike Wink about fire prevention and the firefighting features of the project, and we started to talk about the two helipads that we were building. And he said to me, you know, if you could agree to make those helipads 100 feet wide and give them a high-pressure water source located right at the edge of the pad, then we could land the big firefighting helicopters there to refill them. Because although they can refill them from the lakes, at night, there's not very good visibility to do so, so it's obviously much preferable to be able to land and reload. And we, of course, immediately said yes, and we added this to the MMRP as one of our project commitments, because we recognize, just as all of our neighbors do, that the more we give our local firefighters the tools to stop fires, the safer it is for all of us in the community. And making this part of the county safer from wildfires has been one of the key drivers in the design of this project. I think it's important to understand how this project is different from others. You have heard a variety of comments in the letters about the fire risks associated with low-density developments. And I want to explain how this community is simply not the same as the communities referenced in that literature that was cited. In order to understand that, I think it helps to first look at the setting. Although the property is in a fire severity area, the site conditions at the property are dramatically mitigated by both the existing conditions on the property and the proposed project conditions. So if we look at the first map, which is a map of the irrigated landscapes and water environment, it shows all of the irrigation and water features on the property. As you can see, there are vineyards, both existing vineyards and areas that have been cleared, but not yet planted. And they're all throughout the area slated for Phase 1 development. In addition, there are several large bodies of water, and there's a proposed golf course, and the polo fields. We also, for your informational purposes, included the lands in Napa that are being developed to vineyard by our neighbor, who was the former owner of our property. In order to show how the development, particularly around Maha Farms, is sheltered by the lake and by the vineyard development, which sort of curves around the Maha Farms area. All in all, these irrigated and water areas total approximately 2,500 acres that surrounds all of Phase 1. If we turn to the next slide, we have also shown all of the wildfire fire breaks and the defensible space associated with the project. Remember, there's a 300-foot fire break from commercial structures, 150 feet around residential structures, and 50 feet on either side of the roadways, as well as along the undeveloped edges of the property. Again, these fire breaks are areas where the vegetation will be managed to remove flammable material. These add up to another 2,500 acres. So the next page, if we can turn to that, shows both of those areas together to give you an aggregate picture of what the landscape looks like with these fire ameliorating features added in. As you can see, huge swaths of the property are now teal and purple. But I think if we turn to the next map path, map rather, that's the clearest visual image of what's unique about the project. What we've done here is to take the fire severity map and overlay all of those irrigated features and all of the fire break features, put them all in teal for ease of visual analysis and acuity, and show you what it looks like to have this much green right through the middle of the Phase 1 project and through the middle of the fire severity zones. And remember, these are managed areas that are enforced both by the Homeowners Association, the HOA, through the CCNRs for the project, and included in the MMRP, which makes them enforceable by the county. That's something that's absolutely unique and very different from a typical community in a rural area. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about the issue of density with reference to this map. As you know from my letter, we engaged with a fascinating group of academics from the University of California at Berkeley, one of whom, Dr. Buttsick, is one of the authors of the literature about low-density development and wildfire risk. When he and his colleagues reviewed our plans and the letter, one of his first comments was to say that we weren't really a low-density development, that what he had meant was parcels of 10 acres or more, not commonly managed or enforced, usually reliant on wells for their water source, but without fire pumps or hydrants, and without a centralized communication and notification system. When he looked at our plans, he pointed out that we were actually a clustered subdivision. We just had several different clusters with smaller lots grouped around a hotel or other feature, and larger lots on the periphery. And all of these factors are significant, because each one of them serves to ameliorate fire risk, and they are additive factors, meaning that as you take them all together, they ameliorate the risk very dramatically. That's one of the things that's special about the project, and I think it's one of the things that critics have a hard time getting their head around, which is that we voluntarily offered upfront as part of the project application to put into place all of these measures to mitigate wildfire risk. So rather than putting forward a project that created a lot of risk and then mandating mitigation measures to lower the risk, we lowered it from the outset. That's unusual, but it's in no way bad from a sequoia perspective. In fact, it's allowable and a good thing. And all of these unique design features that we have put forward make us unique from the perspective of wildfire analysis. And as I mentioned in the letter, the team from Cal is actually very excited about our project, and they have asked if this project can be the focus of an academic study on wildfire prophylaxis and defense, because they believe that the project could be used as a model for wildfire management for future projects throughout the state of California, which means that this project could have an impact well beyond Lake County. They're very excited about that, and so are we, because frankly, they are the best minds in the state on the issue of wildfires. We are incredibly fortunate to be able to host them and for us all to benefit over time from the addition to academic literature that will result from their study of our project as it's being constructed. If we turn to the next slide, this is a close-up to show how all the different layers work together. Thank you. If you look at this, at first, it just looks like wildland. But let me take you through it. On the left, you have managed grazing lands, so that undergrowth is continually being cleared away from these lands. In the middle, in yellow, is a property fire break, typically 50 to 100 feet, which will be throughout the property. Then there's a roadway fire break of 100 feet on either side of the road, plus the road, so over 120 feet. And then followed by the sort of Venn diagram, which is each of the houses with their overlapping defensible space. Then you see a stream, and then there's irrigated vineyards on the right. So that taken as a whole, what looks at first like a wild landscape is in fact a very carefully curated landscape that removes flammable matter that could allow a wildfire to spread. If we turn to the next map, you'll see the distance, the five-mile map, which Ms. Sawyer also showed you. It's important, because it shows that every single parcel in Phase 1, which is what will be immediately constructed, is within five miles of the new fire station, and that means that first responders can reach every single parcel within five to 10 minutes. And because we've committed to putting fire hydrants all along the roads so that all of the parcels can be served with high-pressure water for fire suppression, it's essentially just as if they were in a municipal area. So this is not at all a typical rural development. If we look at the next map, which is regional access, it shows the regional access routes and where your local evacuation centers are, which are the Two Spools at Hidden Valley in Middletown and Twin Pines Casino. And as you heard Ms. Sawyer state, the Phase 1 project can be evacuated in under an hour, and the road absolutely has the capacity to handle that traffic. We also show the road to the north, which could be used for emergency vehicle access, war-guided evacuation, as well as the three roads on Butts Canyon, which are the primary access for the project. And I think it's important to spend a few moments talking about the communication system associated with the project, because frankly, these systems are really phenomenal. I'm sure that all of us here on this call today have signed up to NIPSEL, which is a wonderful system, and we all rely on it during wildfire season. But it's a voluntary system. You have to sign up for it in order to get notifications. The system at the property is different. It's going to be mandatory, which means everyone who enters the property will have to sign up to receive emergency notifications. In addition, the project will have a complete internal security force, as well as the emergency response center. So that means that the security personnel know who's in residence, both in the homes and at the hotels. Each hotel guest will have emergency evacuation instructions, and each homeowner will get a similar packet for their homes. If there is an emergency, everyone will be notified, told to go to one of the gathering points, and then if an evacuation is necessary, people can be led from the site rather than just all leaving willy-nilly. And I think it's important to mention one other feature that hasn't really been pointed to, which is that all of the emergency notification lines are going to be hardwired into the joint utility trench for the project. That means that even if the power goes down, the emergency lines will remain open and active. That sounds like a small detail, but for all of us who lived with the power outages associated with recent fires, I think we know that that's the kind of feature that saves lives, and the project is really rife with these kind of features. The next two slides show the exterior and interior building strategies from our wildfire prevention plan. And briefly, we can highlight some of the small details that are very important. There are exterior sprinklers, fire-resistant materials, non-combustible vents and roofs, fire-resistant eaves and overhangs, and most importantly, underground utility connections. Right now, there are PG&E poles all over this property providing power to the various lakes and the vineyards, and those are going to be placed underground almost everywhere. The next slide, if we can turn to it, shows the corollary, which is the interior building strategies. Interior sprinklers, forced chimney maintenance, quick-release windows, and basic firefighting tools. For those of you who know Randy Sternberger, Ranch Manager, you may know that for years, he gives every visitor to the ranch a shovel and a fire extinguisher to put in their car while they're on the property. And we've basically taken that principle and extended it to everyone on the project so that they all have those same basic tools with them. The next map is important, because it goes to the changes that we made in response to the letters. On the first map, as you can see, this was the original parcel layout. And if you look at the very northeast corner and northwest corner, there are several parcels that were part of Phase 1 that about open space and are in those corners. When we received the comments before, just before our last hearing, we went back over the roads with staff, and they reiterated that they were comfortable with the road network. But as we looked at everything with fresh eyes, and let's turn to the next slide, we decided that it would be better to eliminate the smaller parcels at those two corners and to replace them with two larger parcels in each corner. Similarly, we added some road connectors so that the long roads didn't dead-end but had a loop at the end. If we can go to the next slide, we can focus in on some of those. Along the top line, you see the parcels that were removed, 10 lots at the northwest, four at the northeast. And then on the bottom left, you see a loop connector that was added within two of the residential parcels, a, some removal of lots, and another connection. These all result in the longer roads having loops at their terminus rather than dead ends. And we think overall, although there's their minor changes, we're And we think overall that although there are minor changes, we're very pleased with them, and we think they're a beneficial addition to the project. So if we turn to the next slide. The final page here outlines the project changes that we've committed to make since the FEIR was released. You know, we actually very much appreciate the fact that the AG's office submitted their letter and gave us an opportunity to clarify some of these aspects of the project. We were a bit taken aback when we first received the letter at the end of the day before our first hearing two weeks ago. And of course, it would have been better had they offered their comments at the time of the DEIR, when everyone else commented, so that we all could have reviewed and responded earlier in the process rather than at the very end. But the fact remains that we think some great things resulted from our response to the letter. First, we reduced the parcels down to 385 to eliminate those smaller parcels that abutted open space. We added the loop roads to improve the interior circulation. We got to meet an incredible group of scientists from Cal, and now they're going to be part of our team going forward, and they're going to assist us with our FireWise certification and with doing studies at the property. We had a chance to work more directly with the neighbors on the Santa Clara property access, which we feel was very valuable to that project, and we hope it was valuable to them as well. Similarly, if we look back at the project one more time, as we have in the last two weeks, we came to appreciately all of the design features that will be very important, both for this project and for the community. The fire station, the communication systems for emergency response, the helipads, the underground utilities, the well-designed and improved road network. We want you, the board, today, to have confidence in this project and to know that approving the project means that you're voting for an incredibly robust system of wildfire prevention and defense that will benefit not just the future residents of this property, but everyone in the vicinity. I think it's telling that in the most recent letter that we received from the AG's office, they didn't identify a single additional mitigation measure that they say we should have incorporated. I think that points to the fact that this project has a very comprehensive wildfire management program built into it. As to the rest of the letter, I know it's always a concern to get a letter late in the process, but I think you'll find that it really just reiterates what was said in their first letter. Their critiques that they raised the first time and a request that we adopt Alternative C. But the problem with Alternative C is that it does not meet our project objectives, which simply invalidates it out of the gate. It also does not allow us to invest in all of the infrastructure that gives us such a great wildfire plan and the other environmental benefits associated with this project. Of course, we are always willing to listen to anything that the AG's office has to say. We have tremendous respect for them and for the work that they do. But the fact is that we are at the end of a very long road that the county and our team and the residents of South Lake County have all been involved in for the past three years, from the initial scoping to the extensive community involvement in the DEIR, to the Planning Commission hearing process, and now to these two hearings. You should feel confident that this process has been thorough, that it's been exhaustive, and that it has incorporated all of the substantive input that has been worthy of incorporation or feasible. And in conclusion, there's one last point I'd like to make that I think we've lost sight of recently. As you know, some of the people commenting on the project only became involved in the project very recently. So I think they were not aware of all the hard work that was done by the citizens of Lake County during the Middletown area plan process. Remember that this approval only allows Phase 1 to go forward immediately. Future phases were analyzed at a programmatic level, and they require additional approvals and additional CECL review. Phase 1, with its 385 residential parcels and 250 hotel rooms, falls squarely within the ambit of what Lake County envisioned for this property in the area plan. The map process, which included an EIR, debated, analyzed, and ultimately approved an area plan for a project just like our Phase 1 project. And so although we chose to do a complete EIR for the project and to include the programmatic level of the EIR so that the entire scale of the ultimate project would be under consideration all at once, you should remember that we are simply following the previous analysis that was already done and already approved for the Middletown area plan. As we turn this over to comments from the public, I, of course, like to request an opportunity to speak at the very end, and I and the other team members will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We have our wildlife biologist, our engineer, and many of the other project team members here today. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much for those presentations. Kind of the layout we're going to do here is we're going to go ahead and start with the board comments, and then once we're completed with those questions and comments, we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll bring it back at the end for discussion and hopefully action as we move through this process. So thank you very much for the presentations. I would ask, when we do go to public comment, anyone asking questions, please ask it to the board, myself, and then we'll have someone step in who can answer the question directly. So we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board at this point. Any questions or comments before we open it up to the public? Okay, right now, I'm not seeing any. So if I missed you, please let me know. Tina, you are on the phone?
No, I'm back. I'm back.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right. So seeing none at this point, we're going to go ahead and open it up. We're going to open up the public hearing to public comment. And we'll go ahead and start with, seems like we got somebody up in the boardroom there?
Yes.
Rob, did you have your hand up before we opened it up?
I did. I just wanted to ask one thing. I know before we came live, Carol had asked about holding it to two minutes, and I think we need to reconsider that. As long as the conversation and the comments are relevant, like, we're going to really hold him to two minutes? You know, this is...
You know, Rob, I completely agree. You know, we, I did talk about the two-minute timeframe, but we know this is a very important project that's going on. We'll definitely be lenient as we move through the process today in the public comments. We want to make sure we get that stuff out, Rob. So I don't know, didn't want to finish your comment there, but go ahead.
Well, no, that's right. You're on the right track. I just, you know, as long as it's relevant and doesn't get off on some windy curve, but this is the largest land use decision this board will ever make.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And the public is impacted, and I think they deserve to be heard on relevant topics, so.
So then, Mr. Chair, do you want me to time at all or alert you?
Well, no, no, I definitely want to time it. Just alert me at the two-minute mark, and if it can be done there, we can go from there, and then we'll move through the process and see, like we said, each discussion, you know, if it's relevant, if there's a question that needs to be talked out a little bit more, we'll kind of move through that process. I know we have a lot of folks that want to do it. That's why I was considering the two-minute, you know, kind of as a baseline, and we'll go from there. But I would appreciate the time on the two minutes. I see we have someone up for public comment, so we'll start public comment with the in-room folks, and then we'll move to the folks with their hands up and in the room. So go ahead, Chief, go ahead.
Thank you. Paul Duncan, Assistant Chief for Cal Fire and the Chief of South Lake County Fire Protection District. I really want to thank the developers with the, we had some questions regarding a couple of changes in the agreement, and that's what I'm going to bring forward today, but they've been very reachable and approachable, and we appreciate their cooperation. And at the district direction of our Fire District Council, I'd like to enter a couple of agreed-upon edits to the development agreement, and that would be Section 7.4, which is labeled transient occupancy tax. We'd like to add an additional sentence which reads, quote, "These limitations specifically exclude the continued levy and collection of the special tax approved by voters of the South Lake County Fire Protection District in November 2018," end quote. Additionally, Section 12.3, labeled Emergency Response Center, we'd like to add or change the wording in the second sentence of the section to insert the words "ongoing maintenance costs." So that would read, "At developer's option, the cost of design, construction, and ongoing maintenance costs of the Emergency Response Center, including permit and other governmental fees, shall be credited by the local agency against the first amounts of the fire mitigation impact fees," and that's Lake County Code Chapter 27. Those are the two changes we request, and it was agreed to by council with a developer. And that's our comments.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief Duncan.
I did have one question. I'm not sure who to answer this right now, but I'll ask while Paul and Mike are here, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor Brown.
The fire, we've heard discussion of the fire station. Whose fire station would it ultimately be?
That's what this discussion centers around, and it would be through a permanent easement process.
Two minutes.
Sorry, say that again?
No, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. A permanent easement process with them. So we would have access to the property. It would be Fire District property.
No, I get the easement part of it. Okay, go ahead. I think you were just getting ready to answer, sorry.
Yeah, it's fine. It was, it's complicated, but it would retain ownership of the land. The Fire District would have access to it and operate the fire station on it, but the ownership of the land would be granted through that temporary, a permanent easement where we would be there, and if we ever decided to move a station or change that location, it could revert back to the property owner, and then they could handle that. And Kay, if she's still on, could clarify that even a little further on the discussion we had with both our council and their council.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you. Yeah, Chief Duncan did a great job. The idea is that we would turn over the building to the Fire Department, so it would become theirs. The land would continue to be owned by the landowner but would be subject to a perpetual easement in favor of the Fire District for as long as they wanted to leave that station there. So, which was the mechanism that their council suggested to me, and I think it's an eminently sensible way of doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Brown?
It does, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more public comment in the room?
Yes, we do. Joan, would you like to come to the microphone?
Can we have whoever's working the cameras stand there? I know you focused in on one individual in the boardroom. Can you back it out to where it was before?
Joan Moss. Last week, I asked where I could get a paper copy of this to study. I don't have access to internet, and I think I agree with the Department of Justice letter that the citizens need more time to read these documents and to digest it. I believe that I've heard on the media that we are now in a drought condition equal to the drought that was occurring when we had our first 2015-16 valley fire. I really respect Cal Fire. They have answered many, many calls in the last week or two that we're not aware of. I believe that the public has the right to read the documents. I would like to read the letter by the Department of Justice. I don't think Mother Nature has been consulted about the water that will be needed for this project. I think that it's a pie in the sky. It's huge. It took many, many years to develop this project, and I don't think we can digest it and understand it in two weeks by a presentation in front of your board. I think the citizens have the right to read it and understand and comprehend it. I appreciate the work that went into this. I appreciate the fact that obviously Cal Fire has read all the documents and understands the project. It takes a lot to comprehend. By law, you have to have the public record documents on a ledge out here, and I'd like there to be some way that people like myself and others can read it on paper. I see a map up there for two or three minutes, and I hear what it's about, but I would like to study it. I don't think it's fair for us to have three minutes when you've had three hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Do we have anyone else in the room who would like to make public comment?
It does not appear that there are any further comments in the boardroom.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Sfratia. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. For the folks that are on the Zoom meeting, we do have, I see, four hands up at this point. We will start with, if I get this wrong, P. Broderick. I see that they've had their hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Simon, members of the board. My name is Peter Broderick, and I present the Center for Biological Diversity. The center submitted extensive comments on the EIR for the project, and I'd like first to express our concern about the late changes to the EIR and the project materials that were recently made public and that we haven't had time to fully review. We're asking to give the public the time they need to review this significant new information and to recule this revised EIR for public comment. The changes to the final EIR are directed toward correcting significant shortcomings in the environmental review, many of which identified in our letters, but they don't do nearly enough, and the center remains deeply concerned about the project's significant impacts to biological resources, water quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and wildfire and public safety. It will have a drastic effect on habitat and wildlife on the project site, including oak woodlands, critical migration corridors, and habitat species such as the threatened foothill yellow-legged frog and western pond turtle, which are found on the site. The project provides inadequate buffers, which we commented about, around reservoirs, creeks, and streams, and will impede the existing corridors. The developer is proposing to permanently preserve only a tiny inadequate fraction of this 16,000-acre project site. We're also concerned that the project will substantially increase car traffic and vehicle miles traveled in the county, and this is a time when California needs to drastically reduce travel in order to meet its statewide goals for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. The developer has refused to consider reasonable mitigation measures that we've proposed, for example, creating or contributing to a transit fund in the county. Critically, the project proposes low-density sprawl in a remote wildfire-prone location, and peer-reviewed scientific research has consistently shown that this type of development significantly increases the risk of wildfire ignitions. Now, the project proponent says that this type...
Two minutes, Mr. Chair.
...is categorically different from the projects considered in that peer-reviewed scientific research, but has provided no evidence that this is the case, and frankly, has failed to disclose the risk of increased wildfire ignitions to the public. The project applicant has refused to prepare a wildfire evacuation plan at the project site despite repeated requests from the California Attorney General's Office for Biological Diversity, Fire Expert Dr. Thomas Kova, and members of the public. Given these unaddressed concerns, the inadequacies of the environmental review, and the threat from the project to public safety, the center asks the board to deny all project approvals or, at a bare minimum, continue the hearing and recirculate the EIR for further public review and comment.
Thank you for your comments, Patrick. Okay, we're going to move along to Denise Louis.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, so I also want to urge you to delay... to delay a decision on this EIR and the project and allow yourselves more time to read and digest comments, all the comments that came in either by letter, email, or from the public. And more importantly, you need to judge for yourselves whether the stated mitigations actually reduce the impacts that have been of concern to all of the commenters. Just because they say that the issues are mitigated to less than significant does not really necessarily mean that the impacts are less than significant. For example, the letter from the California Native Plant Society mentions Lake County Western Flax. It's a rare plant that depends on the special soil within the project area. And the EIR does not address this in particular. So my only concern right now is that you not make a decision today on the EIR or the project and that you evaluate all the comments for yourselves and not depend on project teams' evaluations of mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our next comment here, Rosemary Cordova. Rosemary, can you hear me?
Rosemary, I send a-
There we go.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Rosemary Cordova, and I am a resident of Middletown. I am also a board member of the Caliomi County Water District, which is the water district that serves the Middletown area. And then also, I'm a board member of the Middletown Area Town Hall. And I'm not speaking on behalf of either of those boards at this point. I'm speaking as a private citizen. But I just want to say that my experience with the Gwinoc management and the project I have found to be uniquely and exceptionally collaborative with our local community. I have just been terrifically impressed with how willing they were to be in communication with us, let us know what was going on, address all sorts of ancillary questions that came up from those meetings. It has been just terrifically illuminating for me to hear again their presentation today and see that they have made changes like the change that they were just mentioning, that 3.9-3. We had a little miscommunication about the monitoring of the well that is going to be across from the cemetery. I was hoping to have indefinite monitoring of that well site to just make sure that it's not impacting the water source for our town. And there was just a miscommunication, but they were so quick in their, both their transparency and their responsiveness to our concerns. I just, you know, in all these years of public service and also being a community member here, I have never found a business to be more willing to communicate and collaborate with a local government. I've just been really impressed by them. And I reserve my judgment to have opinions later, but I can say absolutely to this point, I have just found this organization to be exceptional. I really appreciate the plans that they propose. I'm looking forward to how it will stimulate business in the area. I look forward to the growth, you know, like the new-
Two minutes.
Yes, fantastic. Yeah, so I just want to really say that I support this project, and I hope you'll help it move forward because it's really to, in my opinion, to our benefit. And just kind of in response, I was looking up Peter, who spoke earlier, and the Center for Biodiversity. I, I don't know, I just looked it up, and it looks like that's an organization that has, is based in Arizona. You know, if there are concerns that you have about the impact in our local area, I really strongly suggest that you come and speak in a local venue so we can understand your perspective, just like the Gwinoc project has. So thanks so much for your time and your service.
Thank you, Rosemary. Okay, we're going to go to the next hand up, Marjan Chris. Mr. Marjan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Marjan Chris, and I am a graduate student at UC Davis. This afternoon, I want to express my opposition around the development project before you today. I want to highlight three elements that raise concern. First, whether we are talking about sensitive habitats, threatened or endangered species, or finite resources, the EIR does not take substantive steps to permanently conserve these vulnerable biological resources. In fact, it seems to completely ignore the scientific evidence that has been shared for the drafter's consideration. In addition, the report fails to tackle the greenhouse gas emissions that will result from this development and instead defers to lofty and aspirational language for how to tackle these issues. If this proposal seeks to provide leisure for decades to come, then how will future generations truly enjoy this opportunity if the project turns a blind eye on really considering mitigation measures that have been suggested by organizations and state agencies alike? And I just want to echo the previous speaker. I think the Center for Biological Diversity is actually headquartered in Oakland, California. I was looking at their website earlier, and there is a lot of projects that are local, and they have been doing a lot of work in the state of California. But lastly, we cannot solve the gaps of the EIR when it comes to addressing wildfire management by simply referring to a wildfire prevention plan, failing to include these comprehensive plans aimed at wildfire management as it relates to the present conditions of the area will have deadly consequences. What the EIR and plan tells us is that we have much more questions than we have answers, and we are not planning effectively for these catastrophic but more frequent wildfire events. We don't need to think back to five years ago when this area was last hit by a wildfire. Rather, we can look to present-day events as wildfires are burning throughout the region. Or should we be reminded of the devastating fire that just happened two years ago in Paradise, California? We should look to our neighbors to understand that seemingly comprehensive projects are not-
Two minutes.
-unique. They are not quote-unquote "unique", but in all honesty, wildfires aren't selective when they hit communities. Had it not been for COVID-19, I'd be in Lake County this weekend and, like tradition, jumping into Clear Lake with my friends and family. However, I am prioritizing the health and safety of the community, and I ask that you, as elected officials, do the same. The board needs to reissue an EIR that relies on science and expertise to maximize the safety of your residents and visitors. Whatever slight delay this may take can mean the difference between being a best model or another case study of disasters to learn from. Despite it not being the easiest or fastest way to reach the end goal, it is necessary for the sustainability of the community. As it stands now, the county board should not, in good faith, approve this document, especially when new language has just been added or you have, and you have not been given adequate time to consider it. Thank you, and I yield my-
Thank you, Marjan. Okay, we're going to move to our next hand up here, which is Sally Peterson.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning. My comments are along the same lines with Rosemary in that revisions have been made to the EIR, but those copies of the EIR are available electronically on the website, and there's hard copies that are available at all the public libraries. So I did see notices in that regard. So I believe everybody has had opportunity to review the EIR. The revisions that are discussed were in response to concerns that have been raised. And I think the applicant has gone over and beyond addressing it be by mitigation matters or just outright altering their plan. But I think all the concerns have been addressed, and all questions have been answered. So in response to the, you know, the agency, or I'm not sure who they are, the Society of Biological Diversity that is out of the area, whether it be in Arizona or Oakland, I too would like to hear, you know, I don't know why they didn't come to any local venue and speak to the citizens that live here. I live in Middletown. I'm a citizen of Lake County and Middletown. I'm also a citizen of the tribal nation here, at Middletown Rancheria, Pomo Indians. And the applicant has reached out to everybody, including the tribe, including the residents. They've spoken at the math meeting, the Middletown Area Town Hall several times. I'm on the board for the math, and they've been over and beyond everything that we've asked for, and they've come to speak to our citizens of Middletown several times. And so Middletown needs this kind of project in our area. We need the, we need the stimulus for our local economy. Our businesses here are suffering, and we need this kind of indirect impulse into the community here. And this is a project that would do that for us. I think that, I disagree with the grad student that was on the line from UC Davis, although I appreciate hearing his concerns. I'm sure the board does. But again, I feel like all of these concerns have been addressed. They've been taken care of. The applicant is spending a lot of time. Time is money. They're spending a lot of time and money in addressing all these issues. And this has been delayed several times. There's been adequate time to address all of this. I'm not even sure how many times it's been delayed. So I am urging, as a citizen that lives here in Middletown, I am urging the Board of Supervisors to approve this today and not delay it any longer. It's ridiculous. All of these concerns are just over and over. It's regurgitated every time we meet. It's been, it's been taken care of. We need something like this. It's a good project. It's going to provide jobs. It's going to help the economy here. And so again, I just urge that it be approved today with no further delays. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sally. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to our next hand up here, which is Jay Webb. Check if we can get him unmuted. Go ahead, Jay.
Can you, can you hear us, Jay Webb? Looks like you're unmuted. Can you give me a sound check? Might be having an issue with their mic. I'm not seeing any activity on their end.
Okay, then Jay, we'll, if we can get it figured out, we'll, we'll come back to you. We're going to go ahead and go to-
Yeah.
Let's go to Timothy McDonald.
Okay, I'll move on to the next hand here. Timothy, you're unmuted. Can you give me a sound check?
Yeah, this is Tim McDonald.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Tim McDonald, resident and owner of the Red Star Preserve in North Pope Valley, just south of the Maha Development Site. I'd like to speak in support of the Maha Development and about a few professional teams assembled for the Maha Project. I'll speak to a couple of the important groups, including the project team, along with public groups, like the recognized Sherwood Engineering, Granite Engineering Contractors and CAL FIRE, and a couple of exterior fire protection companies. We'll start with Sherwood Engineering, Civil Engineers, and Cody Anderson. Sherwood Engineers are one of the most respected civil engineer groups in the nation with multiple awards for environmental sensitivity, both public and private. Their notable projects include the Brooklyn Bridge Park, Cal Poly Field Campus, Resideo Trail, Santa Lucia Preserve in Monterey, and many more notable projects. They also created the China Waste Water Guide. World-recognized for their rainwater runoff, riparian quality of protection, sustainable water use, and wildlife and biological protection designs. I would move from there to Granite Engineering Contractors. They call themselves America's infrastructure company, which I believe is very true. Granite is perhaps the premier public and private engineering contractors in the world. They have local offices in Ukiah with close ties to the community, and Frank Palmelia of Ukiah leading their local team. Granite has a long history of high-quality and environmentally sensitive work practices. Granite also has modern equipment that adheres to certain quality emissions controls and state standards. Their company size allows for exceptional maintenance and inspections without compromise to their equipment. The Granite team understands the risk of uncontrolled runoff, dust, noise, fire protections, and hazardous spills. International quality control of their operations provides the best monitoring of risks I have ever seen. Finally, Granite has close ties to both state and local water quality and air quality departments, and is well-versed in their requirements. With regard to fire protection, Mike Wink, the battalion chief at CAL FIRE, and some exterior fire protection companies have been heavily involved in this discussion with the, with the development. And while well-described by Kay Philippakis, I want to mention the team of fire planning on the site. There's been extensive planning in coordination with Mike Wink of CAL FIRE. A new firehouse is planned, including helipad, to provide protection in unprotected remote areas in an unprotected remote area that endangers surrounding property. Fully manned by CAL FIRE in an area that was previously unprotected. There are planned exterior building fire protection systems, which are very unique. There are plans for an automatically deployed fire retardant and water solution, completely organic, that is triggered by infrared sensors when it sees a fire. The sensor sends a signal to deploy the fire retardant solution covering the building and a 50-foot perimeter. This is the most innovative and effective building protection system available. This technology protects both the buildings and the firefighters fighting the wildfire if a refuge is needed. In summary, I believe the development team has assembled one of the most qualified, sensitive, and appropriate environmental teams ever assembled for a project like this. They not only understand their local sensitivities, they are well-versed in the current technologies and environmental protective measures required to make this the world-renowned development it is planned to be. I believe Lake County can be a shining example of how to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Webb. Okay, we have the next hand up at this point for comment is Victoria Brandon. Check, can we get Victoria unmuted? There we go.
This is Victoria Brandon, representing the Lake County Sierra Club. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I want to raise an issue that I've raised several times before because I think it's really important. The developers, close to the end of their presentation, were saying, as they have in the past, how closely this project follows the Middletown Area Plan. It is certainly true that the general nature of the project, the combined resort residential nature of it, and many of its specific aspects are indeed very consistent with the plan. And the densities for which they are applying Phase 1, the part of the project which is being covered by a program, a project-level EIR, that too is very much consistent with the area plan. However, that's not the only approval being requested. The request includes approval of a larger footprint, especially for residential, of up to 1,400 residential units plus workforce housing, some of which may be on the project site, plus resort residential units, which share a kind of hybrid component of resort and residential impacts. These additional units and these additional requests, these entitlements, have not been analyzed at a project level. This is proposed for the future. But if you approve the entitlements as requested today, if at some future- approve the entitlements as requested today, if at some future date that request comes forward, it will not be possible to state, as is true at this moment, that this density is not consistent with the area plan, which only allows a maximum of 800 residential units on this site. And I don't see the necessity for approving, uh, this larger footprint at this time. It is conceded by everyone that additional environmental review will be needed. Uh, if the approvals that are given today, or whenever the vote finally comes, are limited to the aspects of the project which have been approved, uh, which have been analyzed at a project level in detail, uh, that definitely will be consistent with the, with the area plan and it will reserve the possibility of limiting the density in the future if that application is made, which is, I think, conceded that that will depend on market conditions at the time. So I urge the board to consider modifying the approvals to those which have been fully analyzed at a project level, uh, in the EIR and this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Victoria. Okay, Jake, I see the next hand up is, uh, Melissa Fulton. Can we see if we can get Melissa unmuted?
Good morning, supervisors and representatives of the Maha project. Um, I believe... Good morning. Um, I believe that, um, this project has the potential to make, obviously, large changes for Lake County that, um, have been long awaited. Uh, I understand the hesitancy of many people to see a project like this go forward. However, it is quite obvious that the project developers have done extensive outreach, not just to, um, a few in the community, but many in the community. And certainly, all of the relevant agencies have been, um, met with, discussed the project, and have expressed their approval of the project. It is a time-phased project. It does not mean if the word "go" is given, so to speak, by the Board of Supervisors, that next year, all of these impacts will be felt nor implemented. It will take several years for this project to come to total fruition, over which time a lot of, a lot of the planning and processing that has already, um, taken place will move through future processes with as much forethought and consideration as we have seen to date. It would seem that for the future of Lake County, that this project is more than deserving to be approved and to be allowed to move forward to benefit not just South Lake County, but all of the county of Lake and all of our communities. This will provide many, many job opportunities, housing opportunities of all levels that are so necessary for us now and in the future. So, thank you for hearing my comments and thank you for all of your dedication, uh, both from the project developer's standpoint, but also from our many county departments who have put so much into this, up to and including the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. See, there's still a stand-up, a hand up with Jay Webb. I don't know if that was previous comment. It's just staying up there. Um, we'll go ahead and, uh, open up the room at this point, Jake?
Uh, real quick, uh, Jay Webb was the gentleman who had, or the person who had, uh, technical difficulties. Um, and I did see them turn on a camera, so I just wanted to check in to see if, um, they reserved their, or...
Right, okay.
Uh, so Jay Webb, I see your hand is still up. Um, can you give me a sound check? All right, so it looks like we're still not receiving sound from you. All right, so I will, um, go and unmute the floor. You want to move ahead with that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, I see another hand just came up, uh, Lisa Kaplan.
All right, you're unmuted, Lisa?
I believe so. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, I just wanted to, uh, thank the board for consideration of this and for hearing, uh, the people. I wanted to echo, uh, Rosemary's comments that, um, if these organizations that do not live in this area wish to, um, provide comment, um, and say that they're considering the general public here, as well as generations to come, we would really appreciate them coming to, uh, the math meeting to speak to the people, excuse me, and introduce themselves because we are very much, um, in appreciation of Maha's continued dialogue with us. And, um, and I'm aware that, um, when problems are presented to them, they make every effort to come and speak to the people, uh, who are, um, having issues, uh, including the water company, including neighbors to the, um, to the site in, uh, in Middletown. Um, no, no project is, um, perfect, but this group has done a lot more than most investors would ever do to try and address environmental and community concerns. So, maybe there's more work to do, but I just really want to commend and thank them for everything that they've done so far. And I think that it's really, really noteworthy that if this project were not to be developed by them, we have no idea who would come and what they would do to the environment and if they would even begin to have the kind of awareness and consideration that this group has. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. I see next up we have, um, it's under the, uh, the name, uh, Valley Oaks. Whoever's going to speak to Valley Oaks, if you would please, uh, give your name. Once we get you unmuted here. Jake, can we see if we can unmute him?
Valley Oaks, I sent you a, a mute request.
Yep. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you very much for the offer to speak. At the last meeting I spoke and I, after I got back to Middletown, uh, I got quite a few phone calls from people that are not happy with, uh, my presentation, uh, for...
And, uh, one thing, can you give us your, can you give us your name, please?
Butcher Thornton.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anyway, uh, I got some phone calls after our last, uh, conversation. Sure that, that I reiterate, people of South County feel this project is. Uh, we have been languishing here for the last, uh, 12 or 15 years and, uh, have not made any progress to speak of. And this will give us an opportunity to really move South Lake County forward and, in fact, the whole Lake, uh, Lake County, uh, area. I also wanted to speak about, uh, the density and about, uh, that was a concern on the Santa Clara project. Uh, we just heard one gentleman talk about low density and how bad it was. Uh, last week, it was someone talking about high density and how bad that is. Well, 12 years ago, when we were doing the general planment, the area plan, we talked about density and, uh, the traffic and the parking in Middletown. And we made a decision that density should be more increased downtown and larger lots away from town. Uh, right now, we have, uh, lots that border Middletown proper that are 20 acres, have one house on it and a field full of, uh, wheat and else and everything else. It's all over. You know, take my word for it. You can come and look. We, we need density downtown. If this Santa Clara project goes through, just think of the people that are going to be living there. There are two blocks from a grocery store, there are two blocks from banks, restaurants, and schools. There are three blocks from the post office and three and a half blocks from the park, senior center, and library. So that relieves the burden of traffic downtown and parking. So density downtown is, is what we want. It was called at the time walkability. The ability to go downtown, shop, move around town without having to drive. So, density is important at downtown for, not only for the people that live here, but the businesses. You get more people downtown because parking is not a problem and it really would help the downtown businesses. So, I would urge the board to move forward with this project. Uh, we've, we've been hearing, we've had public comment for years on this, not just in front of the Board of Supervisors, but way back in 2012, 2013, uh, and, uh, at math and so on. So, we've had plenty of comment. Anybody that comes in now and wants to make comments should have been here, uh, years ago. And we, we just keep rehashing same, same old thing over and over. Every time we get a new person move into the area, they don't want any growth. So, I would urge the Board of Supervisors to move forward with this, get it approved, and let South County grow. And, and I thank you for your time and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Butcher. Okay, Jake, can we try, uh, Jay Webb one more time?
Yeah, all right. I'm gonna, uh, try to unmute him here. All right, you're unmuted, Jay Webb. Uh, can you give us a sound check?
It still doesn't look like it's possible. Three attempts to, uh, to get audio from Jay Webb and it just doesn't look like it's possible.
Yep, I, I completely agree. I just wanted to make sure we gave him all the opportunities that we could, um, appreciate it. Uh, you know, so we're gonna go ahead, uh, Jake, uh, one last thing. Let's, um, I don't see any other hands up, so, um, let's just open up the room and then we'll bring it back to the boardroom, see if we have any final comments there.
All right, I will unmute the floor here. The floor is muted. If you would like to make a comment, please state your first and last name.
Okay, Jake, here none. We'll go ahead and, uh, close it up and then we'll bring it back to the boardroom. Do we have anyone in the boardroom that would like to make, uh, comment?
We do have one more comment in the boardroom.
Excellent. Then let's go ahead and go to the boardroom.
Go for it, Joan.
Joan Moss, I really appreciate being able to read this. This is what your agenda says. Any person may speak for three minutes on any agenda item, however, total public input per item is not to exceed 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the board. This rule does not apply to public hearings. I appreciate that you've let people who come up here go beyond the three minutes because it looks like your agenda says that public hearings are different and people can, cannot be limited to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. Okay, any more, uh, comments in the room?
I see there's not appear to be any more comments from the public in the boardroom.
Okay. We are going to go ahead and close, um, the public hearing this point. Oh, yep, Catherine, go ahead, Catherine.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate a brief opportunity just to respond to some of the comments. I think really the only comments that I'd like to respond to are those from the CBD, um, particularly with reference to the report on wildfire that they referenced, the COVA report. And I simply wanted to point out to the board that that report is really a matter of apples and oranges because their report analyzed full build-out of the project at 1,400 units, residential units. But of course, that's only being analyzed at a programmatic level. None of the roads have been designed for full build-out. None of the additional wildfire measures that would be associated with Phase Two have been put. So, it's not something that you can compare to the project. What you need to compare is the analysis that was done on the Phase One project, which is before you, and that's what the wildfire mitigation measures apply to. The other thing I, I wanted to mention is that, you know, they have, at every juncture, submitted a barrage of documents the night before a hearing in an attempt to waylay this project, and then complained that they were not given enough time to review the documentation. There's a certain irony in that, and I hope the board understands that this sort of saber rattling at the hearing is a tactic to stop a project and not to improve the quality of the environmental review or to improve the quality of the project because I submit that there is no set of measures that they would accept as adequate. They simply would continue to say, "It's not good enough." Um, and then I did want to mention on the Oakland versus Arizona, just to clear that up. They do have a branch office in Oakland. They are headquartered in Arizona and they were formerly known as the Southwest Center for Biological Diversity. I began my, uh, practice as a lawyer in Arizona, which is where I'm from, so I'm very familiar with them. On Ms. Brandon's comments on the Middletown Area Plan, we have heard her comments, we respect her very much, and we disagree with her. We believe that it was appropriate for us to come forward at this time with the complete request for what we want to accomplish over time and to have that be part of the board's consideration of this project. We will still require additional environmental review. All that this does is essentially rezone the property to allow for up to 1,400 units. Um, but, so we are being allowed to ask in the future for more units. You will still have the discretion to decide whether the number of units is appropriate to the property and whether the impacts have been adequately mitigated. I also want to mention that the Middletown Area Plan, although it does say 800 residential units, it has no cap whatsoever on hotel units, which suggests that the Middletown Area Plan did allow for the possibility of larger densities than simply the 800 units. Um, to, to wrap things up, you know, this is a project that has received 317 letters of support from members of the community who live here, who work here, and who are part of the ongoing life of South Lake County. It is easy for lawyers in particular to come in and say a project is not good enough without providing any standards for what would ostensibly be good enough. And ultimately, as one of the speakers said, uh, Ms. Louie, you are being called on to judge for yourselves whether or not this is a worthy project. And that means, is this, as a land use project, worthy on its merits to be adopted in Lake County? We submit that this is a worthy project and we hope that you agree and we look forward to hearing your comments and we thank you for all of your time today.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close up, uh, the public hearing and public comment point at this. We're gonna bring this back to the board, uh, for questions and deliberations. Um, I see that Supervisor Crandall, uh, you took yours off mute. Are you looking to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I do because, um, I've been just looking through minutes and, uh, just to kind of, I've actually looked through the minutes a couple of times and I wanted to make sure that I highlighted that, um, the draft ER, EIR was conducted back in February. Um, and then in the minutes, uh, June 18th, it was stated that they needed time because they didn't receive it, the draft until April and that it wasn't put out until two weeks after that, which was in essence, end of May, early June. And, um, this is June 18th. And then later on, it explains that, um, it was submitted the night... before, they needed more time to review it, and then towards the, later on towards the end of the meeting, one of the commissioners had stated that they would like more time to review, which pushed it an extra week. A couple others had confirmed that they would like to do the same thing and they felt that they were being rushed at the time. And so they actually conducted another week worth of these hearings. And so, and then later it describes that some of these draft EIRs were conducted back in February, so that's reiterated in there, and that they had to go through the documents and they looked, and so they asked if they can extend it, so it was extended. Then we extended it an extra week as well because of these statements. And so I think, I have a lot of faith, I know that the others have faith in their planning commissioners, I have faith in my planning commissioner, and so on the 25th, I looked to find out if there were any other concerns about those type of extensions or anything along those lines, and I don't see any. And so for me, I think we've had adequate time and I'm ready to move forward. As much as I appreciate and truly care about Mother Earth per se, because I'm a Native American, so I always speak of it, I do feel that we've had enough time to go over these things and so I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you very much Supervisor Crandall. Okay, other board members, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, thank you. I felt for a moment there that Catherine was channeling my inner voice about the irony of saying last minute is not appropriate when everything we've been receiving from the CBD has been last minute and over 100 pages for us to read, and it includes reports of, of looking at comparisons between us and the San Diego or Riverside area, which I just don't see as that being a simple comparison. You definitely want to do the research here, not just give us research you've done elsewhere and try to apply it here. That seems to be a bit of a Simpsons paradox and I don't think that's appropriate for us to have to deal with. I think that the project itself is a, definitely a large dream. It looks ecstatic. I think there's a great amount of energy and effort that have been placed to make sure that it will be done in a safe manner. I do have a few concerns that I want to put out there, even though I don't think they will be barriers to the project. But one of them is that throughout my reading, it does talk about undergrounding of PG&E wires, and our presentation today talked about undergrounding of PG&E wires, but throughout the reading, it uses a, an adjective of "as much as we can" or it just, it sets the place where there won't be some undergrounding in certain areas. So I'm wondering if maybe Catherine or maybe Kirsten can provide more details of how much of the wires plan to be undergrounded, because I think that is definitely a part of fire safety. The less we have our wires showing up in the air, that would be increasing the safety of the area. And so I'd like to get a better idea of what that might look like for undergrounding rather than believing that it will be 100% underground.
Go ahead, Kirsty.
Chair, thank you Supervisor Sabatier. The reason why we wrote to the extent feasible is in some cases, if we needed to bring high intensity or higher voltage line.
I can't hear.
In some cases, those can't be fully undergrounded. So the intention is absolutely as much as physically possible, we do intend to underground every aspect of lines as part of the project, but in some cases, if it's an easement for another property, we won't be able to obviously underground them. So that explains to the extent feasible.
Okay. And then another question was, some people brought up greenhouse gases, and I know that for the workers coming in and out of the area, that that's gonna be a different aspect, but I also know that the state of California is really moving fast and actually ahead of schedule of meeting our greenhouse gas emissions plan for climate, the climate action plan for the amount of electric vehicles we have out there. And so I'm kind of curious, there's gonna be obviously some maintenance vehicles and other vehicles on the project site, what's the plan for electric vehicles and what's the plan for electric charging stations to try and make sure that you're helping those with electric vehicles to have access to your site, which may reduce the greenhouse gases overall in general?
Well, that's a good question. I actually, when I first saw the electrical vehicle charging station map, I actually thought it was a mistake. At this point, we're still in very high concept plans, but we're having over 100 vehicle, electrical vehicle charging stations. In addition, all of the housekeeping, in fact, if you look at the TDM plan, which is the Transportation Demand Management Plan that we did in response to the draft DIR comments, we committed to 75% of our fleet to be electrical. That's a very big commitment. And we would have done 100% except for the commuter van, the sprinter van, things like that, we just don't know where the technology is, so we couldn't commit to that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then as far as the fire stuff, I mean, the amount of extra above and beyond, whether it's every road acts as a fire break, whether it's the exterior sprinkler systems that are gonna be installed on the residences or just buildings in general, I think you've definitely gone above and beyond and I appreciate that because we've all lived, whoever lives in Lake County has all dealt with fires and we know what the anxiety is like to deal with those and for you to have all these safety measures, I do appreciate. But there is one part, I know that you said even if the power goes down, that there can be an alert system, are you, is it possible, are you looking at an old school fire alarm as well, just like we've recently installed in our areas down there? So that if all digital access fails, that they might still be a sounding alarm that all the residents can hear in the area?
Yes, in fact, we even call it the old school siren. So there'll be multiple, it'll be both a, you know, old school fire siren such as you have in a downtown small community, in addition to the hardwired old school phone line that would typically be in older subdivisions, so that in the event of any kind of emergency, there would be a direct line to either the hotel rooms or the residential unit. And the siren will be designed so that anywhere around the property can be heard, in addition to the, connected to the fire camera.
Perfect, perfect. I know that when I went to visit the area, I did see the nurseries that are propagating the native plants. I also know that part of the philosophy behind this project is to, it's all about the environment, it's all about the scenery and anything that would destroy the native scenery would destroy what this project is trying to bring to people who are going to live there or going to be guests there and their experiences. So I think you have to kind of see what's happening right now at the ground level, that there is this native plant nursery already happening. They're taking great care to make sure that that environment stays as pristine as possible. I think that it's never gonna remain exactly as is, there's gonna be some human impact, there's gonna be some construction, but the idea is to limit that as much as possible. We've also seen some of the videos where they're using some of the same rocks on the side of the building so that it looks like it's really embedded in the area with some green on top of the roof rather than just your normal roof. Everything that I've seen suggests, again, that everything is above and beyond, and so I'm really hopeful with what will be developed out there. The last part of my question is, there's two more things, and it all ends up being back on the developer agreement. And on the developer agreement, I had mentioned last time that the community benefit was blank, but then we had been shown a slide with the community benefits and the overall blank page was that slide basically. And I can understand that the benefit of this is we're gonna get some employment opportunities, the benefit of this is we're gonna get some TOT opportunities, but I also see that there's other impacts that I've read being discussed but don't see necessarily in the development agreement that we've agreed in our negotiations to make sure that those impacts will be dealt with. And one of those impacts is the Butts Canyon Road. In one section about the intersection, it talks about looking at doing a stoplight, and I mentioned this last time too, Caltrans is trying to get rid of all stoplights on our, on our roads that Caltrans takes care of. So this would seem to be going against the grain of what the state is trying to do, and I want to see something that helps with the traffic flow, because you're gonna have workers at the Santa Clara place, of course, but you're probably gonna have some coming from Hidden Valley, they're gonna want to cross over the road, the highway to go down Butts Canyon, you're gonna see an increased amount of traffic. That roundabout that was placed over at Hartman Road on Hidden Valley has made a huge impact in decreasing the traffic that we used to see at 8 o'clock in the morning, every morning, and at 5:00 PM in the evening, every evening. I don't want to see something like that happen also right at Butts Canyon Road, and so I'm hopeful, I would like to see that being embedded in the development agreement, that we will work together and collaborate to help with that, rather than not seeing it within the development agreement, and especially away from the stoplight and more towards a roundabout. And my last comment has to do still with Butts Canyon Road, and that is, I don't believe that, and I could be wrong, I don't believe that there is a turning lane to go inside the project. And for purposes of traffic and for purposes of emergency, it would be really nice to see a turning lane dedicated for that project, and again, looking to get that into the development agreement and just for safety purposes. Those are my comments.
Supervisor Sabatier, greatly appreciate that. I did want to just do a time check here. What I would like to do is be able to take a lunch break until 1:30, and then we can continue deliberations at that point. You know, I know there's a lot that needs to be talked about, but we've kind of pushed this thing as far as we can, I want to make sure, get staff and the board a break here so we can be in good mind as we come back and continue these discussions. So at this point, what I would like to do is take a lunch break until 1:30, and then we'll reconvene at that time.
And if it's possible to get some remarks based on my comments when we come back and...
Yes.
So that my comments don't just...
You know, I apologize about, there's gonna be that gap there, but I just think it would be prudent that we do that at this point. Like I said, get staff and get, you know, some board members, some lunch here, a break for a few minutes, and we'll go, we'll come back at 1:30 Bruno, and we'll continue on if we could. Catherine, you guys be ready to answer Supervisor Sabatier's questions when we come back. So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and take a lunch break until 1:30. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene our meeting, I want to thank everybody for their patience. We know we've extended the time, but we are back here now at 1:45, and we're gonna go ahead and continue on with the board deliberations. I know when we took a break, Supervisor Sabatier was just asking some questions, and I'm wondering if we can get the answers. Supervisor Sabatier, go ahead. Cannot hear the boardroom at this point, at least on my end.
Sam?
Yes.
Ah, there we go.
There you go.
Didn't mean to yell, everybody. Thank you very much. Yes, I would love those questions answered if possible, and then I do want to add one bit, and that is that the late last minute arrival of 100 pages of documents with almost seemingly no preparedness or having read the actual document that they're criticizing seems very politically driven, and I have issues when speaking with CalFire and getting one side of, yes, we're doing everything we should be doing following 4290, 4291, and possibly even above and beyond versus the Attorney General saying that we're not. It's just, it seems like there's a lot of lacking of conversations or very politically driven motivation. So just wanted to make that statement because I appreciate looking specifically at a topic and arguing about the topic, but I feel like we're just arguing with one another rather than actually looking at the issue at hand that we're discussing today.
Okay, thank you very much Supervisor Sabatier. Any other board members?
So, and I, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
Where we left off, did you get your questions answered?
Oh, not yet, we were waiting on that.
Okay, so we're gonna do that now? Yeah.
Yep, we'll go ahead and go to Catherine.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll ask my question.
Or Kirsty, whoever's gonna answer. I see Kirsty's unmuted.
Yes, thank you Chair Simon. What I thought I would do is go ahead and provide a visual, can everybody see the screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, so this was submitted as part of the project. The EIR analyzed it, both in the impact analysis and also in the traffic section. And I wanted to share that there is four entrances on Butts Canyon Road, three of which will ultimately be constructed. It's either going to be primary entrance option 1 or 2, and out of those, two of them have both a dedicated left-hand turn lane. So what you see is the option number one here, here is a dedicated left-hand turn lane and a dedicated right-hand turn deceleration. This is the back of house entrance plan, this is where the existing Langtree Winery entrances will be approved to be both a left-hand turn lane and a deceleration right-hand turn This one will not be improved for a dedicated left-hand turn lane, but there will be substantial intersection improvements for sightlines to be able to adequately take that turn. And then this is the McCain Entrance Road, which will again have a dedicated left-hand turn lane, substantial intersection improvements, and a dedicated right-hand turn lane. So as I said, this was all submitted, I think this was February of 2020, as revised, and originally submitted in about a year before that. It was analyzed in the EIR. In regards to your Supervisor Sabatier's second question about the intersection of Butts Canyon Road and Highway 29, it is the applicant's obligation to financially contribute to the intersection improvements, and because it's Caltrans jurisdiction, I believe it would be up to Caltrans for the amount of introduction or involvement with the county of Lake. I did want to explain that the intersection improvements that we'll be doing will be submitted as part of an encroachment permit, as part of the grading plans, as part of the first immediate case plan. And that is as part, again, analyzed in the EIR, condition of approval, and as part of our grant. I hope that answers your questions, I know there's other people, if there's additional questions, I can answer them.
No, I appreciate that Kirsty, very much.
Okay Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot more to add, I do, I do want to go off what Bruno said a little bit about the irony of the last minute, last minute submittals. The stuff that was sent to us, the folks that are asking for more time, the stuff that was sent to us is not relevant to the new information that the applicant sent in. It's about, you know, plant life and vegetation, nothing's changed as far as that's concerned. It's a tactic, I recognize it after 20 years, that it's just a stall tactic and it's unfortunate because there are some legitimate concerns that people have, but that doesn't happen to be one of them, and for them to whine to me about last minute submittal and then submit something at 10:30 last night and 6:30 this morning, I found a little ironic, so I appreciate what Bruno said about that. Okay, that being said, I am still trying to wrap my head around why the DOJ would get involved in this. They've never been involved in any project in Lake County, and I'm not aware of any project at all that they've gotten involved with initially. They go after folks environmentally, criminally, you know, and all that other kind of stuff after the fact, but, but prior to this, and so, you know, and I had, I had a conversation with the chief earlier too, and, you know, there's no person who could have been involved with any of the wildfires that we've had over the last five years that would not be concerned with ingress and egress, one way in, one way out, you know, all those issues that we've had in the past. And so you want to make sure that we don't make those mistakes again that were made back in the 60s and 70s when the Riviers and Buckingham and Hidden Valley and those major subdivisions were done back in the 70s, was the most recent. So we don't want to do that again, but DOJ is concerned about ingress and egress of a two-lane road, Butts Canyon Road, that will dump out onto a two-lane state highway. So I find that ironic too, I'm not sure what they're gonna do about that. While we're on that subject of traffic, the roundabout is something I think, I agree with the chief on that as well, that's something that should be considered. I'm not a real big fan of roundabouts because of the cost, but they are very effective, there's no doubt about it. The cost is a lot, it's way more than a stoplight, but it's far more effective, and I think for the amount of traffic that this will ultimately... for the amount of traffic that this will ultimately have, I think that's something that should be guaranteed in that possibility, it sounds like they're working on that. In this, maybe somebody can answer me, and I'll base my decision on what neighboring counties are considering, but I am curious as to the lack of input by Napa County. I don't know if that's intentional, I mean, they obviously know about the project, they border the property and actually cross over in some places, so I'm kind of curious as to what their input has been, or should be, for that matter, going out Pope Valley Road and in that area there, that will definitely be impacted. But again, that's not necessarily my concern, I'm just curious about their, what their input was on that. And so, the other question, another question I have about the fire station, is when will it be built? Is that something that is to be considered after, after, you know, there's a certain amount of homes that are built before that's triggered, or if that's going to be done initially upfront? I think, I'm not sure if the fire department's concerned with that, or the fire officials are concerned with that, or if they already know the answer to that, but I would like to know that, I think that's something that, if there was a fire department out there without any development, I'd be okay with that too. I mean, I think there's definitely clearly a need out there. The, let's see here, the benefit zones, so in the past, we've done these benefit zones for the roads, and I suppose Anita could weigh in on this, I think we could do that, but it would have to be voted on by everybody that's on Butts Canyon Road also, and basically that would be, you know, a guaranteed source of funding for our road department to be able to maintain that road to a standard that would be otherwise compromised by that kind of an impact. I don't know if Scott's given that any consideration, but to do that by a vote of property owners, and in this case, you have one owner owning, that will ultimately own several hundred lots, and so they would have a significant say in that, but I think it's something that should be considered, and could be considered prior to development, if possible. And then the other thing is, I think the county should look at a new standard of benefit zones for fire mitigation, like we have in the Riviera's and Buckingham, where we have a certain amount of money that goes into the ability to be able to abate properties. I'm not saying that any of this property would ever need to be abated, but, you know, Riviera's have been around for 50 years, this is going to be around 50 years, who knows what's going to happen after that. And so, to have a fund available that the county could go in and ultimately do some hazardous vegetation removal on that, I don't think that's unreasonable to at least have that discussion, and how that would look. All of these conditions that we have, that sound really good, and, you know, all of the vegetation, you know, everything that they're considering sounds really good, but I haven't really heard much about who's going to do the monitoring of that, and, you know, make sure that those conditions are still adhered to decades from now, because we're not planning for next year, like Melissa said, you know, this is something that's going to be ongoing for a long time, it's going to be phased, and so, you know, maybe we need to also consider an ongoing fund or fee from this developer, this applicant, for monitoring of those conditions that we apply to this, because it does cost money, and we know from past experience in different use permits that we've offered, that we put conditions in there, and then no one ever follows up with them. And they do that largely because we don't have staff, because we don't have the resources to do it, but there are conditions that are in there, and why have them if you're not going to enforce them, or monitor them? The other thing is, and this, I've had some discussion briefly with Anita about this, but, you know, we're dealing with an issue right now in South Main and Lakeport over annexation and incorporation and all this, and it's a challenge, it's costly, and it's caused a lot of division, so that's why I think that things need to be stated upfront, and considered upfront, agreed to upfront. And maybe we should talk about whether or not we want to have a condition in there that the incorporation of an area like this, to make it its own town, village, or anything like that, would not happen over a certain period of years. I think, I think it's, it would be beneficial for future boards not to have to deal with something that they would say, gosh, I wish they would have done this 30 years ago. So, you know, either we can or we can't, and we can have that discussion if the board is so inclined, but I think it's of some value. I do, I have heard that they would like some help on their own zip code, I think that's appropriate, that's good to do. We did that for Hidden Valley, that was one of Ed Robey's pet projects, and we did it, and it was of a lot of value to that community of Hidden Valley when we did that, so I don't see where that would be a problem. Here's where it gets into where I have a real problem with this project, and I was hoping that this wasn't a part of it, that even if they wanted to separate this and bring it back, I don't know how that looks, but to have a water source that far away, the project should be able to stand on its own when it comes to water, and I know Hidden Valley's already set the precedent, they got water across the highway and all that. I didn't approve that, that was done years ago. And by past boards, you know, I don't know what the thinking was on that, I'm sure they had good reason at the time, and maybe there's good reason now, maybe I'm the only one that feels this way, but I honestly don't think that you should be taking water away from one community because of lack of water in another community. It's my understanding that there is no lack of water by this project, and so I would like to see that be their water source, their water source be directly on-site, as opposed to miles down the road, that will ultimately indefinitely impact the community that that water source is coming from. So that's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brown. I don't know if Christie or Catherine would like to answer any of those questions from Supervisor Brown?
Yes, I'll be happy to start and answer as many as I can. But I can't answer the one about lack of input from Napa County, I don't know why either, but perhaps it was a blessing. With regard to when the emergency, can you all hear me? No?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to when the Emergency Response Center will be built, it's covered in Section 12.3 of the development agreement. It will be substantially completed, and that's the sort of shell of the building, it's not a complete outfit of the entire fire station, as a condition to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first commercial building to be constructed on the properties. So that means basically, we're planning to start with the Maha Farms portion of the property, which means that before that first commercial building at Maha Farms could obtain a certificate of occupancy, we would need to build the Emergency Response Center, and then the plan is that it will be kitted out, expanded, the staff will grow, et cetera, as the project grows. But the building itself will go in almost immediately, so as soon as anything else starts. With regard to the benefit zones for the roads, maybe a question for Anita, the question of who monitors the vegetation, it's part of the MMRP, the Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Plan, and it would be typical for that cost to be passed on to the applicant, if the county wanted it to be. So, on annexation into a city, you're correct Supervisor Brown, we don't want to be a city, we would love to be a zip code. We'd like to have a Guanac Valley zip code for the project, but there's no desire to incorporate, so we would be amenable to language, saying that we, for some term, would not apply for annexation. And with regard to water, it has, you are correct, that the property, the project has adequate water for its needs. It has always been very important to the owner that there be an additional source in the event of some unknown eventuality. We were willing to add the condition of approval for long-term monitoring, we would certainly be happy to consider having that be even longer-term monitoring, but it has always been very, very important to the property owner that there be some alternative water source for contingencies.
Okay, so, okay, no, that's, that makes a difference, because we could, you know, we have, countywide, we have, you know, the Rumsey Gauge and all that, we do some measuring in order to, you know, for Yolo County to take water and all that, so there could be some similar agreement that, you know, when the water gets to a certain level, that they're able to pump it from another location. I think, you know, that's something we could probably work on, if that's, because it doesn't sound like that's going to be their primary source, it'll be secondary if conditions get to a point where it's necessary. That's what you're thinking?
Go ahead, Catherine.
Oh, I mean, my own feeling is that we have a very strong condition of approval that requires monitoring in the event of any use of that water, it has to be monitored within several hundred feet of the property for any impact on the groundwater table, so from my perspective, that's adequate, and from the applicant's perspective, but obviously it's for the board to determine whether you feel it's adequate.
Well, you know, I obviously don't want to shut you guys off and not, you know, have you build a, you know, project where you ultimately don't have any water, and then it's your problem, I don't think that's reasonable either, but I think it should be identified as a secondary source. We do that within our own water systems when we're tied into another community as a secondary resource, we don't go from that secondary resource until it runs out and then use the primary. So I don't think, as we sit here right now, I'm not going to iron out the specifics of it, but just the general concept, and I think with a little help from Jan Koppinger, who does this kind of thing, or Anita, whoever, I mean, there's greater minds than mine that can figure out the details of it, but I think it's something we need to consider, because water is, you know, that's one of those things that we're dealing with now, you know, we get accused of selling the water to Yolo County, you know, and all that kind of stuff, and that didn't happen, so you need to make an agreement very clear right upfront on what is required and what's, what the intention of it is. So just asking that we do that in advance. And just to go back to the fund for monitoring, go over that one more time for me, because monitoring of the conditions.
So the county, well, there are two enforcement mechanisms for monitoring of the conditions. One is that we've sort of parallel-tracked the MMRP, which is a county document, and our CCNRs are homeowners' association documents, so that they both have enforcement mechanisms. So on the private side, that means that any owner resident in the community who feels that there isn't adequate, for example, vegetation management, can assert their rights and force the homeowners' association to do a better job. And the county has the right to oversee and enforce the mitigation measures that are adopted as part of this EIR.
No, I get that, yeah, okay.
So I think your question was whether the county could pass the cost of monitoring on to the applicant.
Well...
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. What I want to do is, you know, arrange that upfront, or agree upon that upfront, because, and I'll give you an example. Right now, in Hidden Valley, there are probably 100 or so lots that are not in compliance with hazardous vegetation ordinance, and just common sense type stuff. And after a little research, I learned that those lots are actually owned by Hidden Valley Lake subdivision, they're owned by the homeowners' association, they're not owned by private owners, in that sense, and so, nobody's doing anything about that, including the county. And a lot of it has to do with, we don't have the resources to do it, and they're not going to find and monitor themselves, apparently, and so we don't want to have a situation like that, you know, in decades from now, in any other development that we're responsible for now.
Well, and this may be something that Anita wants to weigh in on, before I can continue to talk about it, I don't know.
Anita, I don't know if you have a comment, or...
Thank you. I think it really depends upon exactly what we're talking about. If you're talking about some kind of clarifying language, that's possible to try to do today. As far as zones of benefit, that's an entire process, and it's always arguably on the table, but since it requires voting, you can't make it a condition, because obviously those eligible to vote get to exercise their rights there. So I guess it really depends upon specifically what's being asked, because, again, some things, just in terms of clarification, can be adjusted on the conditions of approval, and some may not be. And as far as the zones of benefits and all of that process, Scott would probably be able to at least explain to everyone what the requirements for those are, but I don't see how that could be an appropriate condition at this point for a zone of benefit. You could include some language that, you know, that option remains on the table, but that's superfluous, because it always remains on the table.
Yeah, so Anita, and maybe I'm calling it the wrong thing in this context, but, and I don't remember the exact details, but there was a little subdivision over behind the mountain, over by the middle school in Kelseyville. And it, there were like eight or 10 lots there, and it was a private road, and they did, the county, one of the conditions, I believe, on that project, this was 15 years ago or so, so I'm a little rusty on it, but they, one of the conditions that we had on there was that they would do a zone of benefit for road maintenance on that little stretch of road there, and it was one owner that was doing it, so it was easy for them to do, but that was, it was a condition that we put, it may not have been a zone of benefit, it may have been something else. Scott, I don't think Scott was here at that time either, but, so it seems like it's been done, but in a different, maybe a little different.
Well, you could, I suppose you can require that they undertake the process, but I don't know how you can, depending upon when it was done and the ownership changing, you can't really guarantee an outcome with the electorate, so I'm not real clear on exactly how that would work. Scott, do you remember anything, maybe Scott remembers something about, even though he wasn't here then, as to how that might, that might work. Certainly, certainly you can require as a condition of approval that the road be maintained, you can do that without having to go through anything further, but I guess I'm not real clear on where you're headed.
Well, I'm headed, what I'm, yeah, my ultimate goal is that there would be a funding source available to make sure that, that the hazard is mitigated to a level that, first of all, the county, okay, so it's Vista Mountain Estates Drive, if anybody wants to bother looking up, and it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six lots there, so, I don't know, if anybody wants to look and see what the conditions were of that, if they apply, but...
I'm wondering if it was impact fees?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I can't remember, to be honest with you, but the point of it is that there's a, that there's a standard, that's, there's a source of funding to be able to hold us to a standard of hazardous vegetation control, that we're not at a point where we go, okay, we've got to, you know, we've got to spend, you know, $100,000 of county resources to go in there and clean these lots, and then we've got to go through the abatement process, but there would actually be a funding source there available, and it may not be ongoing, it may be just a one-time expense that's put in there by the developer, I don't know what that would look like, but I think any development that we consider from now on, has to have something in place to avoid what we've already seen, with some of the disasters that we've seen over the last five years.
Hey Supervisor Brown?
Mr. Chair, what I might suggest is that once you get done with all your comments, if you could take a brief recess, so that we could, staff and I could discuss this, and also discuss it with the applicant, to see if there's some language that could be added.
Before you do that, before you go through all that effort, I want to make sure that there are at least... sure that there are at least two other board members that think this is a good idea to even pursue it, because maybe I'm off on, on the wrong direction here, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So at, at this point, obviously, we can go through the board here, talk about the mitigation issues or a fund of some sort that you talk about. You know, obviously, I'll hold my, got my comments that I'd like to make on the entire project, but ultimately, I think that, you know, setting up a fund at this point or sometime, I think, I, I wouldn't be in favor of that at this point. So I don't know, Supervisor Chapati?
Uh, I agree that we need to ensure, I want to give everyone the benefit of the doubt, but at the same time, we've seen what can happen maybe 20 years later, 30 years later down the road, and without contingencies insured, that we can maintain a level of cleanliness, a level of safety in a high fire area, that that would benefit us to make sure that, that's there. And I don't think it's, we're, I don't think we're talking an arm and a leg here. I think, I think we're just looking at a, a nominal fee, which I think is similar to what Supervisor Brown is talking about, that occurred in the Riviera's in Buckingham, where that was a nominal fee. And it can have an impact by being able to have the funds readily available for us to take action versus waiting for compliance, which at one point, whether, if things turn for the worse, that waiting for action might lead us in a direction that we don't want to go.
Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Crandall?
I, I think it's a good idea to look into it, to see what we could do to make sure we're protecting ourselves as a county, if, you know, if that is, that is possible.
I, I think, Mr. Chair, that, that truly what you're talking about here is rather than devising the mechanism that the developer would use, is just to make sure there's sufficient clarity that the project applicant would, would be responsible for vegetation management and hazardous, and should develop some type of a plan. And it may be somewhere here that Kay could speak to, to it, I'm trying to go through here, to develop a plan where there would be sufficient resources in order to ensure ongoing maintenance.
That's it. That's, that's exactly it. You know, I don't know where this thing's going to go in the future. Is it going to have one owner of, you know, 500 lots, or is it going to have 500 different owners eventually? We, we don't know how that's going to go. We, you know, I look-
Okay, well, maybe that general language, if, and, and Kay, you may want to speak to that if there's already something here that goes to it. And again, it's not, telling the applicant how to do that is less important than just clarifying the fact that the applicant understands that that obligation is ongoing.
I, yes, I think that it would be useful to have a break on this issue to look at what the obligations under the development agreement already are with regard to this issue, because I don't know that we'd thought about it. So it may be that there already is language in what is essentially our contract with you that would cover this situation.
It's a place to put it.
Um, perhaps, and if not, perhaps it's something that Anita and I can agree quite quickly upon some language. So perhaps a 15-minute recess?
Why don't, if, Mr. Chair, obviously, this is up to you, but it might benefit to hear all of the comments so that we don't have to have these 15-minute recesses five times.
Yeah, I completely agree that we can work through. And I know EJ didn't weigh in on that, the last conversation, but we plan on taking a break on it to at least let you and Catherine talk about it here after we get the reports from Supervisor Scott and Supervisor Crandall.
Also, Mr. Chair, with regard to the Attorney General's letters, I can tell you about the last year and a half, the counties of San Diego, Sonoma, and I believe Monterey have all heard about this. It is just now something that the Attorney General's Office, Department of Justice, is looking to and making comments, and it's becoming more frequent than it had ever been in years past. And their ability to do so is not anything that's brand new.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Scott?
Um, you know, I don't have any questions for the applicant. I think they've been, at every turn of this, of this project, has reached out to me to make sure that I'm aware of what they're doing. They've invited me out to the, to the, the property. I honestly think they've gone above and beyond doing what they need to do to make sure that they are protecting the environment and answering all the questions from the community. We've heard from the community, and they are excited about this project coming to Lake County. And we know this will definitely be a game changer for all of Lake County. So I'm excited to, to move forward and approve this project and have it come to fruition. Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, before, before we went to the lunch break, I spoke before Bruno and kind of gave my comments about the, I went back in the minutes and looked at the different times that we postponed and, and whatnot, that, that there's been opportunity for different groups to look at the draft EIRs and the final EIRs. And I, I'd stated then that I, you know, our, our planning commission has done their due diligence in this. I watched a lot of that take place. And, and I, and it, it, for me, I, I already said I'm ready to move forward, but I did, I did see that Rob's question is going to be addressed. And so I'm, I'm fine with looking into that if it's going to be something that we can prevent something happening later on down the road. So other than that, I, I am ready to move forward. And I appreciate everything about this project. I, I like the approach that they're taking and looking at everything. Ever since I got the, the initial book that we looked at last year, the approach that they're taking to make sure that, you know, we have, we have fire mitigation and, and the, to try to stay as close to, you know, having a, not as much development and whatnot taking place, making sure that there's a more natural environment that's important, so.
Excellent. Supervisor Brown?
Thank you. I, I would like to know if there's any interest on the board to discuss or to, you know, work out maybe some details on this water issue too, as a, as a secondary source and not just simply monitoring. I mean, here's the thing, we only have one chance to get these conditions in, make them, make them applicable and relevant to now, but consider what the future's going to look like. Back in the 70s, some will remember that Hidden Valley started out as a development by a warehouse. They were the owner of all of that. They're no longer the owner. And so now we're dealing with things that, that could have been maybe dealt with back then. So, you know, that's kind of, kind of what I'm thinking. And, um, just because it's what I think we should do doesn't mean it's what we should do. I'm just throwing that out there if there's any other interest in there. I, I think it's not complicated. I think it's very simple, and I don't think it's unreasonable either. So.
Okay. Thank you very much, Supervisor Brown. I think we can answer to that, or we'll get back to answering that. I know that, I'll just speak, I'll just start with my point of view on the second, making it a secondary water source as, as, as you have stated. I know that the community meetings that have gone through, especially the last town hall meeting, it just happened this last month, there was definitely concern about the secondary well there or the, the second well for the property. And I know some of the issues were addressed at our town hall. And I really appreciate the developer being there and, and listening to the community. One of the things they did want was the extension from the five-year to the 10-year. You did hear someone, Rosemary Cordova, was talking about perpetual on that. And, you know, so it definitely is a concern of the community. But I know this developer has moved in the direction to really work with the community on all issues. And I think for the long term, I, I've heard today too, they may be willing to extend that time, and maybe that's the option of the monitoring, you think that there's an option to extend it, whether it's a 12 or 15 years. You know, I don't know, I can't speak for them, but I did hear that. As far as making a secondary water source, I think they've done the, you know, the studies that need to be done to look at this. They've made it very clear that it's just something that the developer is looking for, which a lot of folks have had to do, even some of our larger developments by the State Water Resources Board after the fires, to make sure they have a secondary water source for their projects. And, you know, I think that's one of the big things, but, you know, ultimately, the board is, wants to make, talk, have that discussion, it's up to them, but I, I wouldn't be in favor of that at this point. The monitoring and being able to work together collaboratively, collaboratively with the developer, I think over the years, they integrate into our community, I think is one of the most important things. And since day one, they've showed that they're willing to do that. And ultimately, it is, you're making decisions down the road for other boards, which we're dealing with, decisions that have been made in the past, but you can't see everything, and you don't understand, you know, just can't be fearful of decisions that were made in the past. I don't know how they were done or what relationships were built as those projects were being brought into the county. But I think this one has been phenomenal. Couple other things too, I just wanted to comment on, is the road access at 29 in Butts Canyon. I know that back in 2014, 2015, I think, there was the SR 29 corridor study that was done locally through the Math Group and Caltrans and every, all the stakeholders in that area. And I know there are some roundabouts. I would be in favor of a roundabout project instead of a stoplight at that. And I know it's already on paper with Caltrans and continuing down that path with the success of the Hidden Valley Hartman Road Roundabout, you know, really would be something to keep moving forward with in that manner. You know, we got some other issues obviously too that we'll be addressing throughout, throughout the South County as far as traffic flow. But, you know, I think it was hit on the head and fore, up in a two-lane road into a two-lane state road. You're not going to get much more besides traffic flow. And I think the roundabouts have proven, especially the Hartman one, that that's a good way to flow traffic through there. As far as the developer and working locally with CAL FIRE and other agencies to think about how to mitigate the impact for fire mitigation, I think it's been great. What I've witnessed and seen in the collaboration of the meetings, both at the Math Meeting with CAL FIRE and other things that have happened in South County that maybe a lot of folks don't know, but I, I think they've done a good job of trying to mitigate those issues. The outdoor fire sprinklers, boy, to me, that just makes a lot more sense. The on-roof system and everything that's being implemented in this project, I would have hoped would have been the way that the sprinklers would have, had to have been added in our area instead of inside. It's great to have an inside, but outside, I think is just as important in this environment that we live in here, especially since we've seen in the other fires. But everything that's been submitted, been best to read through it and understand since day one of what was going to happen with this project. And ultimately, I am, I'm in favor and willing and ready to move forward here eventually today, no matter what time that is, to get this project approved, because it will be a game changer for Lake County. And I think that's one of the big reasons we got folks writing letters from all over, understanding that we are going to have something of a jewel here in Lake County, which I've always known this entire county is. So I'm excited about it. I don't have a lot more questions or comments than that, but I'd be willing to go ahead and move forward. Or Catherine, if you have something to say at this point, go ahead.
I, I do. I wanted to, I took a quick look at the development agreement, and I think it covers Supervisor Brown's concern. Section 21 of the agreement, of the agreement describes a default of either party under the contract, which means like a breach of the contract. And for the applicant, it's a failure to implement or comply with terms and conditions set out in the project approvals, including but not limited to mitigation measures. And once that happens, so for example, let's say vegetation is not cleared, the mechanism for you to enforce that is that you send us a notice, and that's section 23.3, and we then have 30 days in which to cure, which means to fix, to basically fix it, or we are considered to be in default of the agreement. And obviously, we have a lot of rights that are dependent upon this agreement, so that's a pretty good handle for you.
No, I appreciate that. But to put it, put it in a little bit of perspective, everybody in Lake County has that same agreement with us by, because of an ordinance or hazardous vegetation ordinance that was implemented about two years ago. And not one single lot has been, it hasn't been enforced. Anybody that's cleared it has done their own, done on their own. But it's, it's not been enforced, and because there is no funding mechanism to do it. And so that's, that's what I'm talking about. And, and I, I agree with Mo as far as the developer and, you know, the thought that's gone into this and all the stuff that's gone into it. But can anybody here guarantee me that, that developer is going to be the owner in five years, 10 years, 30 years? No, nobody can guarantee that. What we're trying to do is, we can't guarantee who's going to be on the board then. What we're trying to establish is an agreement, a permit that can be looked at in that amount of time in the future, and look back and say, this is what it says, this is what they meant, and none of this, I mean, we started doing early activations for cannabis, and it's just caused us nothing but problems. And this is, you know, I don't want to, I want to avoid that kind of thing. Let's get the agreement first. We had, we bought Canocti, and look at all the problems we had with that, because we were going to get all this stuff taken care of after, after the fact. Let's try to avoid that if we can. I, I understand how, how easy it is to, to, you know, you don't want to support this project. I want to support it. The, the water thing has to be dealt with before I can support it. But we need to get this thing, get this stuff dealt with in advance and not, you know, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, let's take care of it after the fact, and let's hurry up and get this thing approved today. I would like to get it approved today too, but those conditions are important for the future owners and the, the future enforcement agencies.
Well, there is a hook in the development agreement that is not presumably in your other ordinances, which is there's an obligation on the applicant to indemnify the county for their costs as a result of our failure to comply with the-
I don't, this isn't, this isn't a failure on your part. Don't, don't misunderstand. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm not, I'm not implying that this is a failure on your part to try to get something through. This is, this is our obligation that we need to make sure that this is done. There, there is a, a mechanism in place to recover costs. Our problem is we don't have the money to put those costs out to begin with. So basically, what we do is what we do, and that is not enforce things because we don't have the resources to do it. And so I'm trying to avoid that. And it's, I'm not talking about, we're talking about half a million dollars for 500, or 5,000 houses in the Riviera's. So you're going to have, you know, a percentage of that, so it'd be relative. It'd be, you know, less than $100,000 maybe, just to have some fund there available for mitigation if need be. And it would only be used for that. It would never be used for anything else. So as an example, I'm not even saying, don't take, don't quote me on that amount. I'm just giving you a, an example in context of what, what I'm talking about.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, I know Kirsty had her hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I, I can't raise my hand by typical because I'm sharing, so.
I can't hear, I can't hear what she's saying. I'm sorry. Maybe it's just me.
Um, can you hear me now?
I hear a voice, but I-
Is it possible for Jake or Sam to boost the volume?
Can she boost, can she get closer to the mic?
Sure. How's that? Can you hear me better?
Perfect.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, I wanted to just bring up one additional component of this project, and that it's part of a homeowners association and as part of the CCNRs. So the CCNRs were submitted to the Community Development Department, and they outlined all a plethora of different items, one of which be fire safe easements, both the defensible space around the house and the fire breaks on either side of the roads are defined as easements. As part of that definition of easements in the CCNRs, there is a requirement for funding and the homeowners association to have a savings account to be able to do it on the homeowner's behalf. For the most part, that homeowners association will be doing all the fire safe clearing underneath, under the direction of the fire personnel on site, and will be charging the homeowners. In the event that they don't, the Department of Real Estate and the homeowners association have the financial ability to clear that particular lot. So I wanted to add one other element, other than the county and the applicant as part of the development agreement, that there's also the CCNRs as part of the homeowners association.
Kirsty, I want to thank you. And, you know, I, I would just like to touch on one other point, you know, and the point was made earlier in the meeting, that this is unlike any project that Lake County will most likely ever see at this point. I, I know at least for this board, it's something that's unprecedented. And I think in the past, there have been decisions made on smaller things that were not going to have the economic impact that this project will in the long term for the county. This could be the decision- This could be the decision as we move forward, that whether a fund is established or not, we know the economic impacts that will benefit this county through property tax, through TOT, through everything else that are going to be coming down, are going to change what boards going forward will have to deal with economically. This is a game changer and everyone needs to realize that. We understood, you know, small though, 30 houses or 50 houses, you know, being written into agreements, this is an overall county transformation project. And so whether we set up the fund or not, I just want to take that in consideration as we move forward. I think what we're doing today or talking about, we'll be setting a path for more funds to come into the county so we can have more departments and everything else that we've always been talking about. This is one of the big steps to economic development to change the course of Lake County's growth and its future. So it's, you know, when we go back and we look back, nothing has ever been done like this in Lake County and this is going to be very impactful through all the proceeds that will be coming into the county on, on its behalf for the long-term viability of this project.
I wanted to talk about the water real quick and maybe Kirsty, and I'm sorry I called you Kirsten earlier, or Catherine can elaborate, but from my understanding, this is not just a private well, this would be a connected to Caliomi. Am I correct on that in my conversations and the reading, or would it be a private well that they would dig for themselves and just connect it over to the Maha project?
It would be the latter at this point. It's not in the sphere of influence for Caliomi. We have an open dialogue with Caliomi, we've had many meetings with them. I will say that we've spoken to the developer and although in regards to the off-site well, the monitoring is, is currently as part of a mitigation measure and that was where they came up with the five, original five-year. And for some background for the board, when I was at the Middletown Town Hall meeting, I, this is where Rosemary and I heard her say 10 years. And so I talked to the developer and said, can we extend the monitoring from five to 10 years? And they said yes, so we offered it to the county and the county increased the MMRP, which is the mitigation monitoring reporting plan from five years to 10 years. So there's no environmental impact that states that it needs to be anything beyond that. So although we can't, although the EIR can't analyze it as part of an MMRP, the Board of Supervisors, if that's what they choose, they could offer it as a condition of use permit approval that the monitoring of the off-site well happen indefinitely. And I've spoken with the developers and they agreed to those terms. If that is helpful for everybody to understand and I'm sure can ask additional questions in regards to that. Did that answer your question sufficiently?
No, it does, it does. And obviously I, I misunderstood, for some reason I had thought there was a connection.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing, I'm not trying to interrupt. That type of a condition, just that the monitoring of the off-site well would occur in perpetuity or even a water level monitoring, an annual water level monitoring, those things can be added immediately. You could also add a condition that the applicant will develop a funding mechanism to ensure the control of hazardous vegetation.
Okay.
Which will address your concern without having to go through quite an involved process as to determine which one because, and also as times, times change and laws change, those funding mechanisms may be different, but, but the applicant would still be required to develop one. So that condition would be there. Perhaps the applicant wants to speak to that.
Yes, I, I think that that would be acceptable to add that language, that we will develop a funding mechanism to ensure the control of, of the vegetation. And the, I believe that the water monitoring is, is acceptable, but I would request that rather than in perpetuity, which is a sort of an amorphous thing, that it should be for the life of the development agreement, which has been what we sort of treated as the life of the project and that's what is being monitored and enforced elsewhere. So it would make the most sense to have it dovetailed.
So.
That's actually, from a legal perspective, that's fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, go ahead.
So I agree with that too, I think that's, that's reasonable, it's unreasonable to expect them to, to honor an agreement after the development is done, but, or after they're done, the developer's done. But what is, what is, what does monitoring mean? I, I don't, I mean, we say monitoring, but it's like, okay, we monitor it, but you know, what are the triggers? What are the, what are the conditions that, okay, we've gotten to a certain point, now it's time to do this, you know, I, I haven't seen any of that. We can, we can monitor a bus headed over a cliff, but that doesn't solve the problem. So I, I want to make sure that, that our monitoring efforts are for a particular purpose that we can identify.
Like what's the measurement?
Yeah. That's why I want it to be, want it to be secondary as opposed to the primary source of water for this project because another developer, another owner could come in and say, well, let's use up all of Middletown's water before we start tapping into ours. We don't, that's unlikely to happen, but if it did, it would be our mistake for not dealing with it today in here.
I see that Ryan Sawyer has turned on her camera. Ryan, do you have a comment on this? You're still on mute for some reason, can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
There you go, yes.
Okay, great. Yes, I did want to speak to this issue. So the requirement for monitoring comes from the EIR. We have a mitigation measure in the EIR, it's number 3.9-3. And I'm going to read some of it verbatim for you here. So it says that prior to the issuance of an encroachment permit or grading permit for installation of the well, the applicant shall provide to the county an analysis that defines the safe yield of the well. The safe yield must be set to meet the following performance criteria. It has to avoid drawdown of groundwater beyond 300 feet of the well. So that's a pretty stringent requirement. You have to show that groundwater is not decreasing beyond 300 feet of the well to meet that performance criteria. And the analysis has to be conducted using pump testing and be certified by a registered professional engineer. And then the monitoring has to continue to, while the well is being used, to confirm that the safe yield analysis is effective at meeting that performance criteria. So that's what you're monitoring for, to ensure that groundwater levels are not being affected beyond 300 feet of the well.
Okay, Supervisor Brown, does that answer your question? Were you talking about triggers?
It doesn't, in fact, it raises more questions to why so much pushback on not making the groundwater that's available under the site project be the primary source, so.
It is the primary source, this is the backup.
Right, I mean, I think that, to speak to that, the EIR does assume that the on-site well is the primary source and that this well is the backup well.
It's easier for me not to assume it, it's easier for me to see it in writing so that future, future decisions can be made based on what we're making today. And I think you're right, it probably does assume that, but I can't, I, I'm not comfortable with just assumptions.
Right. The other thing to point out is that there are no approvals being sought today related to the well, like there's no grading permit today being sought for the well. So it's a part of the project, it's described in the EIR, but there are no project-specific approvals.
I think the approval is assumed as well. I think there's a lot of assumptions being made, so that's why I'm just, I just want to make sure that it's not.
Okay. Okay, any, any more discussion on this specific item? Okay, so I know the two Supervisor Brown raised the issue of a primary and secondary source of water, we've had some discussion on that. I don't know where the board is at this point, if the information that's given, given is enough to, to move forward with or without it, so. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I got a question. Ryan said that if the well has an impact outside of 300 feet and, and I guess I have the same question that Supervisor Brown would have, was alluding to, which is, what is that measurement of impact? Is it less than 10% refill rate? Is it less than 20%? What, what is, is there a specific within the language that's already going to be regarded to in order to say this impact has over, has, has crossed the red line that we had set in place to say that the impact is more than anticipated?
Yeah, it's the, it's avoid drawdown, so it's any measurable decrease in groundwater beyond 300 feet of the well. It could be one inch, you know.
So basically it's not refilling back to its original amount? Or it's taking much longer to refill to its original amount?
Correct. Pete, did you want to add to that?
One of the key issues here is the requirement for a pump test that is certified by a registered professional engineer that goes through what is anticipated and then there's the follow-up that if the well is actually activated, that it shall actually be monitored to ensure that the compliance with that anticipated study by the professional engineer is actually coming to fruition and that we don't have a drawdown. So you have first the requirement of the plan to be developed, the prior to use, have it in place, pump test, professional engineer certification, and then the monitoring following that to ensure that the basis of the pump test and the certifications are in fact occurring as specified in the requirements prior to the wells being put in and used. Couple of other quick points if I may. The water supply analysis that was conducted was very extensive, clearly identified that there is sufficient groundwater for the entirety of the project, both phase one and future phases on site. The surface water, which was addressed in a prior EIR on water rights back in 2012, that certifies and identifies the uses and places of use for surface water. Those are identified. Some of the provisions of that that are moving forward, those only had to be certified and mitigation measures taken as it was developed. This EIR includes a condition that open space for, among other things, for example, coming out of that EIR that are necessary are implemented upfront and that those be implemented now and assured rather than deferred until such time as development actually occurs. So there's certification of both surface water and groundwater have been addressed, that this is a backup well and it has the conditions, has the certification, and if it is placed, if it is used, then there has to be a condition of it being drilled and approved by the county, that the plan is in place with all the pump tests and everything else done, and then the monitoring to ensure that that occurs.
Thank you for that clarification in detail. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
So it, it's kind of an awkward question because I know that the approval is an approval. However, as was stated, this is a probably, possibly the largest project the county has seen and possibly the largest project the county will see in the foreseeable future. Is it possible to kind of get a, an annual update at the Board of Supervisor levels to, to see, to get an update on the progress, to get an update on any of these conditions as far as getting a, a water monitor, things such as that, rather than, that way the public can be made aware as well as to the decision being made today, how it's, how things are moving along. I think it would be helpful to see its progress rather than, I mean, I know we can ask and other individual agencies can ask, but to make it as public as possible as well to, to show that the due diligence is still continuing and that they're, they're meeting their threshold of what is anticipated of them.
I guess I would pose that question to Catherine or?
Yes, I, I think that would be acceptable. What I would like to suggest and what I've seen in similar situations is a requirement of an annual report, a hearing with an annual report, once per year for some initial period, let's say five years seems sensible to me in this case. And then thereafter, the board has the ability to request additional annual reports as needed over the term of the development agreement. So if you thereafter wanted to say, we, now we'd like to hear from you every three years or every five years or every other year, you can do that after the first five years once you have a better sense of where, how things are going and, and how, how active you need to be in overseeing the process.
But that's, you know, I, I see the point of that is, as a point of curiosity, but there's no, there's no mechanism in place of any advisory or changes or, or requirements to be made, it's just a point of, eh, how's it going, you know, let us know how it's going. And, and I guarantee you, after the first one, no one will ever remember to put it back on the agenda, so it doesn't make any difference at all.
The, the reason that, and I, that's why I was saying it's a little awkward because the approval would be the approval, but at the same time, a development agreement is a development agreement and this would ensure that all parties are following the agreement that was signed. And so this would just be a check-in, if there is a breach of a development agreement, then there might be some actions that could be taken, but this, this is not the intention of, of the project developers to do so. So it would help us understand the, the status and if there's any issues, then we can have that discussion about the issues and maybe even update the development agreement or whatever it is that might need to happen at the time. And I get it that it's mostly out of curiosity, but I think that it, we, we do have a binding contract if approved today and that contract would allow us to make necessary changes if necessary changes were necessary.
Okay, so you're asking for a yearly update, it sounds like, get a yearly update, at least Supervisor Brown, that's what he was looking for, you know, just a status update on how the project is going for the next five years and then we could reevaluate that as it moves forward.
Yes.
Go ahead, I don't know, it was. Okay, Supervisor Brown?
No, I didn't, I didn't raise it.
Oh, okay, I apologize, I thought you did. Okay, any more discussion or deliberation? It's not like we, we talked about taking a break earlier to get those things figured out. What I would like to do is find out with the language that was suggested by Anita, if we accomplished what we wanted to, or the individual who brought it up, Supervisor Brown, if we've accomplished with that language change that was suggested by Anita.
Would it be possible to repeat?
Yeah, Supervisor Brown, I would just, he had brought up the language change, I guess I'm asking the entire board.
I thought you were addressing your question to Anita, sorry.
Some, some language changes that would hopefully accomplish what was being asked as far as vegetation, you know, down the road as far as the developer, so.
No, I think what Anita suggested is, is appropriate. I, I still, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear. There's no other interest in solidifying the water usage issue. Other than just the language that says we'll just monitor it. So, that's it? Okay. The, and I, the reason I ask that is because this is a really important project, really important decision, it's important for the county. Water issues are huge in this county. We've been dealing with it for years up here. I know that this board, the makeup of this board has not dealt with it at all that I'm aware of, other than maybe what we're dealing with in South Main. It's a huge deal and it's, well, we're dealing with it up Pillsbury. So you get a, you get a sense of it, but this is big and I, I can't, you know, without having that language in there that, that protects the water of, of those other folks up there in Middletown, I can't, that's a deal breaker for me, right, at this point. The rest of the project, I think is great, especially with the language for the.
Supervisor Scott or Supervisor Grant, please.
I figured that Anita had answered it, but it doesn't seem that Rob feels it was. But yeah, I thought that they had made a concession together. I'm not meaning Rob, I'm meaning both the people working with Anita, I think her name is Ryan. So I thought it was met, but it's not. What would be satisfying? What would, something stating that their water is protected, is that what Supervisor Brown's?
You know that the water is secondary and there's a trigger for the need for that secondary water source if the primary water source is unable to meet the, meet their obligation.
Okay, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yeah. Go ahead, Anita.
Okay, I understand that now that the board appears as a majority agrees that the requirement that the applicant shall develop a funding source to ensure that vegetation maintenance is maintained throughout the life of the development agreement, that that is acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, how about in terms of with regard to the annual monitoring of the on-site well, and I'd invite Kay to, to interject at any point here. The monitoring of the on-site well will occur on an annual basis and that the applicant agrees to meet and confer with community development at their expense should those, should the water level dip below safe yield. That way, there'd have to be a discussion as to what and how would happen next. So there would be a trigger and there would be an opportunity for county intervention.
So, so that would spell out that that is, would be the primary source because you were saying, I think we're saying something different, the monitoring of on-site well. What they're talking about is the monitoring of the off-site well to make sure that that doesn't impact wells within 300 feet or at 300 feet, up to 300 feet.
Kay, did you want to jump in there in case I've got that somewhat confused or if community development wants to speak?
I, I think what you propose is acceptable to us.
The on-site well?
I believe my client.
To monitor that?
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you, Anita.
To monitor the on-site well to ensure that safe, the safe yield levels are maintained?
To monitor the on-site well on the Gwinoc Valley property?
Yeah.
No, I think, no, I think Anita, what we're talking about is the off-site well.
So it is the off-site well? Okay.
Yes, we are willing to monitor that for the, the term of the development agreement and we are willing to, your language about if it, if it drops, we are willing to come together with you at our expense. Yes. You said it in a more articulate way, but that's acceptable.
There is a requirement in the mitigation measure already that if something is going wrong and you're not, the safe yield isn't effective, that the Lake County Health Services Department and the applicant shall develop a groundwater management plan in coordination with the geotech engineer for approval by the community development director. So there's sort of similar language in the middle.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so I'm not going to beat this up anymore, but I'm going to tell you, that does not resolve the issue that I have of, that just says we will monitor it. It does not say this will be our secondary source if we can't meet the yield with our primary well on-site. That's, that's what, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. All right, so at this point, obviously, I know that Supervisor Brown was asking for it to be named the secondary source and to transfer over afterwards. As far as the board members at this point, he's also asked, you know, if you had a majority of board that wanted to move forward with that, and at this point, I didn't see a consensus on that. So you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the changes that the developer has made to do the 10 years, to do those things, Supervisor Brown, you can say exactly what you were, you were thinking.
No, no, I think, I think you're correct in, in what you're hearing too. I think there's, I don't have another vote, so.
Okay. All right. Any more questions or comments from the board at this time?
I got another question. And so I'm okay with the monitoring of the secondary source because that's the one that we're truly concerned about in case that there's a, a lowering of the water table that would impact the Middletown area or possibly other surrounding areas. I guess my question would be, would there be a necessary remedy? So if you're putting in a fire station, do we have to, does that area have to keep up with fire flows like you would typically do in a township area or a, a typical water district area since water will probably be provided somehow or another to that whole project? I don't think it's a piping project like you would see. I think it's going to be all wells or things like that, but is there, will there be a need to meet fire code for fire hydrants or access to that level of amount of water? And that maybe we can look at that being a trigger, that if you're not able to get the fire flows that are required, that then we reconvene and have a discussion and see what the next steps are.
Can I, can I just, because I want, it's my, it's the issue that I have, so I want to make sure it's clear. You said monitoring of secondary source. That's not what it's called. They're calling it the off-site well. They're not saying that it's secondary. In fact, they're intentionally not allowing it to be called a secondary source. That's what I want it to be, the secondary source. They won't do it. So I just want to make sure you understand that and also understand fire flows aren't just flowing all the time. It's in the need, it's, in case there's a need for, for a fire flow, hydrants or whatever, in that case, all bets are off. Turn all the faucets on, I don't care. That's, that's to put a fire out. I'm talking about the everyday use, irrigation, you know, household use, restaurant use, hotel use, all that. That's what I'm talking about, that this, this off-site well should not be used for that primarily. It should be used as a secondary source if the primary source, being the water source under the ground of the project, is unable to meet the requirement to keep all that stuff going. Then they move, then they shift over to that. That's, that's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you for the clarification, Supervisor Brown. Did you want to finish your thought, Bruno, or you were completing?
I've always understood it as, maybe it's not written down as secondary, but I've always been told and read that the primary source, in my words, from the on-site water is enough to be able to conduct the business of the project that is anticipated to. And the, the way that the EIR was done was based on a much higher capacity than typical because it's not going to be at 100% capacity at all times. It's going to be, some are there, some are not, and it's going to be in and out. To have the entire project full at once is going to be possibly a rare occasion, if not, that, that could be an issue. But I, I call it the secondary source because I know from everything that the, the on-site water is enough based on the cumulative water plan that has been already set within the And so would this make you feel more comfortable, Supervisor Brown, if the word primary and secondary were used?
But the, yeah, that would be fine, but there also has to be a trigger that, that allows them, otherwise it's subjective. It's just, depends on whoever's running the faucet at the time says, nah, I think we need to use this other source. There has to be a trigger that a certain, it gets down to a certain level, you know, whatever that might be. Like I said, you know, the, the language that Jan would use in the event that, you know, you know, one of our redundant water systems would be used in the event that the primary source was unable to keep up.
And I understand the, the issue that you're bringing up, which again is to have an impact on a community that is there versus to, in order to bring water to a community that we're discussing right now.
That already has water, but they're saving it because they got all this other water they could be using. That's not, I don't think that's good management of our resources, of our water resources.
Okay, Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Sabatier. I guess moving forward at this time, on this issue, I know we've hashed it over more than once, the secondary or the primary thing, and now everyone has kind of weighed in on it. So I don't know if we want to continue having this conversation or are we ready to, was there any other topic besides this one? I know you saved it for last, I just want to make it clear before we look to, to move forward here. And I don't think I've heard a change as far as a majority consensus that we're moving that approach. Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
I have a question for Ms. Grant. Let's say we get an annual report and the annual report shows a, a decrease in the capacity for the off-site well, which is the one that we're talking about monitoring. What kind of leverage does the county have to ensure that there's a new plan for water access versus allowing that to continue?
I think that the, the leverage is what Ryan spoke of, the language that's already existing, that then there's going to have to be a, a revision of, of the monitoring plan, that it's going to have to be addressed. I think that's inherent in the language that she cited earlier.
And I would also add that you have all of the remedies that your council has negotiated for you under the development agreement, which is all of our rights to proceed with the project depend on the language in that development agreement. So it's unclear to me what possible additional leverage you could need beyond that.
And I just wanted to make sure that we had the adequate leverage already set in place. And so I.
The agreement does provide several stopgaps and Kay's absolutely right about that, but in terms of, in terms of just the immediacy of, of the water issue, the meet and confer that dovetails with the gap in the monitoring requirements that Ryan spoke of ensures that the county has an opportunity to address this sooner rather than later and to do so in a way that ultimately is going to culminate in a more responsive plan. It's hard to be more definitive because again, over time, circumstances change, but it certainly does put the, the hammer in the county's hand to ensure that that happens.
Well, I will say this, at first it was awkward, but now I'm happy and it seems that the board has approved to have the annual report because I think that makes us much more aware of what is truly going to happen with this project and with the leverage being in our potential hands, then I would say yes, let's go ahead.
Okay, any more discussion from the board? Okay, here or none? I know this is going to be, a lot, look like a lot of motions and want to make sure we get them all lined up and get them corrected, Anita, as we go through. I think.
I believe that Mark Roberts has gone through all of this and he told me that he has it all prepared so that this can be handled relatively in a streamlined fashion through board's consideration.
Okay. So is Mark going to present that at this time or talk with us at this time?
I think they're all, I think they're all on our memo with all the recommended, recommended motions.
Okay. Yes.
Oh, there you are. Good morning or afternoon. I sent out an email to, let me pull it up. Clarifying which exhibits go with what motion, so it's very, so it's clear.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Chair, as Supervisor Sabatier noted, the motions that have to occur are already in the staff report. There are some minor revisions of language, which I believe Mark is prepared to address and which exhibit that references. Again, as long as it's not a draft agreement, but the final agreement, then he can take you step by step through each of those actions.
Okay, well, it looks like we're going to go ahead and try and get through all of these, so.
And Chairman Simon, this is Scott DeLeone. Your, your sample motions begin on page 16 of the staff report and as you go down that list, there are various exhibits that are attached to or are part of each of those motions and Mark or I will be available to help make sure that the, for example, there are reading ordinances in title only and we'll make sure that, that you're reading the appropriate ordinance for, for the appropriate motion. So you can start with page 16 and we'll help you with the amendments that you're supposed to read and as county council has, has mentioned, there are a couple of very minor revisions and we'll be prepared to clarify those when you get to them.
Okay.
And I have a question for you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Supervisor Sabatier.
Are you wanting to take on these motions for yourself since this is within your district or are you looking for one of us to take that on for you?
Yes, but I was just going over. Supervisor Sabatier, as Vice Chair, I would be fine. You go ahead and make the motions and we'll move through the process.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. You know, you know what? Yeah, I will do that. So I will, I will hand the gavel over to Vice Chair and then I will pull up the documents here and start going through them.
Okay. Okay, without any further discussion, I believe we're waiting for action.
Okay. Give me one second here.
And on my memo that I'm looking at, it starts on page nine under section seven for the recommendations. I'm not sure if I'm looking at a different memo.
It's under sample motion, Supervisor. Recommended action, sample motion directly below it.
On page nine? I've heard page 16 and page nine.
Mr. Vice Chair, I just have a, have a quick question because we did talk about the incorporation language and we didn't discuss a timeframe. Can we do that because that'll be incorporated in the amendments that are made?
Yes.
And I think, you know, 20 years is reasonable.
I'm, I'm good with the 20.
My, my question would be, I, I know that, you know, you talked about it when this topic came up, you talked about the consideration of the length of the, the development agreement? I don't know.
That wasn't, that wasn't part of this, this discussion, that was the other part, but.
All right, I thought it was, so.
Mr. Chair, this had to do with the applicant's agreement not to, not to take actions to incorporate as a city, which they've agreed. There was no timeframe discussed and Supervisor Brown had indicated his agreement that the county would assist the applicant in obtaining a zip code. Both of those can be included. I'm not, the applicant hasn't yet been asked if 20 years is acceptable to them for the forbearance of incorporation.
That's acceptable.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, too.
incorporate as a city, which they've agreed. There was no timeframe discussed, and Supervisor Brown had indicated his agreement that the county would assist the applicant in obtaining a zip code. Both of those can be included. I'm not, the applicant hasn't yet been asked if 20 years is acceptable to them for the forbearance of incorporation.
That's acceptable.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in agreement with that too. The rest of the board, we got a consensus on 20 years?
Yes.
Looks like, yes, unanimous consensus. Okay, looking through here to make the motions.
And you're right that the recommended sample motions are, do start on page 16.
One second here, I apologize. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and start. We're gonna go ahead and start with the first motion here. I motion, I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the Let's see, make sure I look at the right thing. Let me know if I'm wrong here, Anita. I move that the Board of Supervisors adopt the water supply assessment certified that the final environmental impact report, EIR 18-01 FEIR, prepared for the Gwinoc Mixed Value Use Plan Development Project has been completed in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and the state CEQA guidelines, adopt the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and adopt the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Joanna, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors make a motion to amend the general plan policy LU 16.12 of chapter three, section 3.9, economic development of the Lake County General Plan, because it is in the public interest as it supports implementation of the Middletown Area Plan and policies of the general plan, especially related to economic development, support for economically developed, diverse job-based innovative resort residential communities, agritourism opportunities, and resort-related uses, while at the same time protecting significant agricultural lands, open space, and natural resources of the area. As further presented in the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020, to include the following section, number 6.12, or number's page six, point 12, point 3, the provisions of 6.12.1 and 6.12.12 shall not apply for the special study area of the Middletown Area Plan.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think that's where community development would want to have jumped in with a correction.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Anita. So it should read 6.12.3, the provisions of LU 6.12.1 and 6.12.2 shall not apply to the Langtree/Gwinoc special study areas of the Middletown Area Plan.
Okay. Take your clarification.
And there was a second, I believe, from Supervisor Scott, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Joanna, if we can have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I will offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered.
For the general plan amendment approval.
I will offer the resolution for the general plan amendment approval.
And that
Thank you, sir. There's just so many.
Yes, there is, and that should be exhibit F.
Okay. And again, we have the resolution that was offered. Joanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move for, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the zoning ordinance text amendment AM-04, as applied for the Lotus Land Investments Holding, Inc., for the reasons listed in the memorandum dated July 17, 2020.
And I believe you meant 18-04.
Did I read that wrong? I apologize. Yes, I did mean 18-04.
Okay. Motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Can I get a roll call again, please?
And this is for the ordinance? What exhibit is this?
There should be exhibit P.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
You try.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but the next action is incorrect. It's not offering the ordinance and recommending it be advanced after moving for the reading. The first action by your board with regard to the zoning text amendment would be to a motion to waive reading of the ordinance and have it read in title only. If that's approved, then your board would make a further motion to advance it to the next agenda for the second reading.
Okay. So we go to the, to the rezone 18-01?
Uh, no, sir. First, you'll have to make the motion that the zoning text amendment ordinance, the reading of that ordinance be waived and have it read in title only, and call for a vote. And after that happens, then you'll move to advance it to the next hearing for a second reading and call for a vote.
Okay, so still moved. Move that the, to the reading of the ordinance have been waived and be read in title only.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Joanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
At the end, sir, there'll be a motion to advance the ordinance for second reading to the next available agenda, which I believe will be the 28th.
Excellent. So move, I, Mr. Chair, I move to offer the ordinance and recommend that it be advanced to the next agenda for the second reading, next available agenda.
Exactly, except you're not actually offering the ordinance today. It's just
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. It's lawyer stuff. Nobody cares but me, probably.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Simon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joanna, can I please get a roll call?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on to
Hey, Mr. Chair, I moved, I move that the rezone RZ 18-01, I move that the reading of the ordinance be waived, and the title only be read, and offer the ordinance.
The ordinance has been offered?
Uh, excuse me, that's two separate, unfortunately, two separate motions.
Okay, I apologize. I move that the reading of the ordinance be waived and be read in title only.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Joanna, roll call again, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I offer the ordinance.
The ordinance has been offered.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is the
Okay, Mr. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
I was just saying, the next one is general plan of development, GDP 18-01.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the general plan development, GPD 18-01, applied for by the Lotus Land Land Investment Holdings, Inc., subject to the conditions of approval and with the findings and reasons listed in the environmental impacts report, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Joanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to major use permit UP 18-49.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I mo, I motion that, that the Board of Supervisors find that the major use permit, UPI 1849, applied for by Lotus Land Investments Holding, Inc., does meet the requirements of Article 15, Section 15.7, and Article 51, Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and grant the major use permit for the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Development Project, subject to the conditions of approval, and with the findings listed in the environmental impact report, staff report packeted, packet dated June 18, 2020, the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Joanna, can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall? Supervisor Crandall, I think he's on mute.
Yeah. Supervisor Crandall, you're on mute still?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Um, is that an I?
Yes.
Okay. And Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Onto the tentative subdivision maps approval, SD 18-01.
Uh, Mr. Chair, before, before you go on to
Yes.
applicable, I'm assuming that your motion included all the amendments that had been discussed with regard to funding for vegetation, as well as the annual monitoring.
Uh, yes, so I need to go back and amend that, but absolutely, all the language we've agreed to is the board, not asking me to put in it.
Yeah, I think you made that understood, sir. I just wanted to clarify it for purposes of moving forward, and to ensure that none of the other board members disagreed since they voted. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. At any time, jump in there when I'm going, so I'd appreciate that. Go ahead Supervisor, I don't know if you read the next title?
Yeah, I'm ready for SD 18-01 for the tentative maps.
Excellent. Okay, I make a motion that the Board of Supervisors find that the tentative subdivision maps, SD 18-01, applied for by Lotus Land Land Investments Holdings, Inc., is in conformity with the provisions of the subdivision map act of chapter 17 of the Lake County Code, and upon that basis, the Board of Supervisors approve said map, subject to the conditions of approval, and with the reasons and findings of approval listed in the environmental impact report, staff pack, staff report packeted dated June 18, 2020, the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to development agreement DA 18-01. And I believe this is where there will be some of the amendments that we spoke of.
Exactly. To the extent applicable, those same approved amendments may appear in the development agreement as well.
Excellent. Uh, Mr. Chair, I make a motion of approval for the development agreement, DA 18-01, applied for Lotus Land Investments Holdings, Inc., based on the reasons and findings of approval listed in the environmental impact report, and the staff report packeted dated June 18, 2020, and the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated, dated July 1, 2020, and all applicable changes that we discussed today to be added. Would that, that do it?
That should work.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Joanna.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. We're moving on to the Middletown Offsite Housing Project.
Supervisor Sabatier, this is Scott DeLeon, and before you move on to the Middletown Offsite Housing, I would like to make a minor correction, and I apologize, we, you know, we have a number of moving parts here, and it was inevitable, I think, but back on the Gwinoc Valley Mixed Use Development motions for general plan amendment approval, GPAP 18-01, we referenced exhibit F for your discussion and consideration, and unfortunately, sir, that needs to be exhibit P, and there was a minor modification to exhibit T to reflect something that you've already addressed, and that is, and I will read it, 6.12.3, the provisions of LU 6.12.1 and 6.12.2 shall not apply to the Langtree/Gwinoc special study area of the Middletown Area Plan. That was added to exhibit P, and then also on exhibit P, in the resolution, in the former, the final whereas, the date July 7 was used for the Board of Supervisors certification for the final EIR, and that needs to be revised to July 21 to reflect today's date. Again, I sincerely apologize for the oversight, but your approval of that resolution needs to be reflected in exhibit F, or exhibit P. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd recommend that you reconsider that item and take it up again and offer the resolution with the corrections as specified by Mr. DeLeon.
Okay, let's go ahead and reconsider that with a motion amendment?
Yes, so amended.
And the resolution is offered as amended, okay.
Okay, so the resolution has been offered as amended. Joanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for keeping us on track. Now, we're moving on to the rezone RZ 20-01 for the Middletown Offsite Housing.
Mr. Chair, I move to read, to have the reading of the ordinance be waived and be read in title only. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I offer the ordinance.
All right, the ordinance has been offered. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No. No.
Supervisor Brown?
Still no.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, moving on to tentative subdivision map approval, SD 20-01.
Mr. Chair, I move...
I'm sorry, did you offer, did you offer the ordinance for the...
Yes.
Offsite housing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you didn't just read it in title only, you also offered it, okay.
Yes, yeah, we did two separate motions.
I'm sorry, thank you.
No worries.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. Okay, Mr. Chair, I motion and find the tentative subdivision map, SD 20-01, applied for by Lotus Land Investments Holdings Inc. is in the conformity with the provision of the Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 17 of the Lake County Code, and upon that basis, the Board of Supervisors approve the said map, subject to the conditions of approval and with the reasons and findings of approval listed in environmental impact, the EIR staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020. Second.
Motion and a second, Joanna, roll call, please, we're almost done.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, last one, major use permit, UP 20-02.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of Supervisors find that the major use permit, UP 20-20-20 -02, up for the community clubhouse and duplexes, applied for by Lotus Land Investments Holding Inc., does meet the requirements of Article 51, Section 51.4, and Article 27, Section 27.11F of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and grant the major use permit, UP 20-02, subject to the conditions of approval and with the findings listed in the environmental impact report, staff report packet dated June 18, 2020, the supplemental staff report dated June 22, 2020, and the memorandum dated July 1, 2020. Second.
I have a motion and a second, last roll call, please.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
No.
And Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
And all motions pass. Mr. Chair, your virtual gavel is in your hand again.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Vice Chair. Excellent job as the chair, thank you. All right, moving right along with this agenda item, good job everyone, congratulations, and excellent work.